Time is 6:15. I call this regular board meeting of the Weslaco Independent School District to order. Today's date again is December 11, 2017. Item number two, establishment of a quorum. Let the record reflect, we have a full quorum with the exception of Patrick Kennedy. Item three, opening prayer, Dr. Canales.
Hey Board of Trustees, we do have our opening prayers. Mr. Rob Lethal is here to introduce.
Tonight, for their opening prayer, we'd like to introduce Sam Houston Elementary's star lead teacher, San Juanita Ramirez, who will deliver the invocation.
Please bow your heads. Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all gifts, and we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our school district events. We also give thanks to the school board members, our superintendent, and a special thanks to the students, parents, and staff members. We ask that you bless them abundantly, and we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. This evening, be with our school board members and guide them in their deliberations, and help them to be wise in the decisions they make, for the good of all those who have placed their confidence in their leadership. Provide them with insight to lead with integrity, so that their decisions may reflect what is right and good. Dear Lord, grant them the humility to always seek your will in all that they do and say. All glory be to you, loving God, now and always through Christ and the Holy Spirit, forever and ever. Amen.
Moving on to item number four, pledge of allegiance, Texas pledge. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, for the pledge of allegiance, we have two students from Sam Houston Elementary School, Ivan De La Rosa and Teresa Vazquez, who will lead us in the pledge.
All right, let me introduce them, tell you a little bit about our two students who are up here. We have Aiden De La Rosa, and he is a son of Alejandra and Juan De La Rosa. He is a fifth grader at Sam Houston Elementary, where he has developed his leadership skills since he started pre-K. Aiden is a role model for his younger sister, Alina, a first grader. He loves school, enjoys also being involved in extracurricular activities. Aiden's favorite subject is math, and he's currently part of the Sam Houston UIL Art Smart Team and the Drama Club. He looks forward to graduating in high school, enarming himself with the tools necessary to launch his college career. How do they can for Aiden De La Rosa? And if his parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? Also with us tonight, we have Teresa Vazquez, and she is the daughter of Michael and Christina Vazquez. She is also a fifth grader at Sam Houston Elementary and an avid reader. While in fourth grade, she became a Millionaire Words reader, and she also received a master's level on the math star assessment in third and fourth grades. Teresa has been involved in many extracurricular activities and is currently in UIL Number Sense and Drama Club. In addition, she is an active member of CCE at Saint Pius the Tenth Catholic Church. Teresa's goals are to graduate from high school with an associate's degree to attend the University of Houston. How do they can for Teresa Vazquez? And if any of her family members are here, can they please stand and be recognized? Okay, you ready? All right, if everyone can please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas pledge?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to you, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you to both the kids that did a wonderful job for us. We'll move on to item number five, awards and recognitions. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, we are proud to recognize today Weslaco East High School Wildcats football team for making 11 straight years to the playoffs. And this past year, like last year, they went three deep. So we are so proud of their coaches, the students, and the entire community for the support. So we'll be honoring the football team.
All right, so here we go. We would like to recognize the Weslaco East Wildcats, who were regional quarterfinalists, and we'd like to introduce them and also recognize some players who received postseason awards. And as I announce your name, if you can please wave to the crowd for recognition. All right, so the Wildcats made it to the playoffs for the 11th straight year and have won five area championships in the last eight years. That's going three deep into the playoffs. Team members are Danny Salinas. How do they can? We also have Freddie Gonzalez, Dimas Alvarez, David Peterson, Antonio Sedeno, John Animas, Christian Avila, Matt Vella, Hector Muniz, Pedro Puente, Giovanni Guerra, Giovanni Barrera, José Serna, Russell Garza, Josh Gonzalez, Edward Villalobos, Felipe Cantú, Pablo Ibanez, Oscar Marine, Jordan Velázquez, Raven Figueroa, Dominic Castillo, Felix Vargas, Imanol Ordones, Leonel Garza, Lázaro Torres, Pedro Posada, Brian Trevino, Enrique Avila, J.C. Cruz, Daniel Roque, Christian Campos, Ernesto Osorio, Isai Martínez, Juan Martínez, Orlando Cabrera, Juan Mata, Adrian Juárez, Eddie Barrios, David Leal, José Guerra, Daniel Posada, Juan Rubio. We also have Damian Gonzalez, Jared Burñas, Brandal Galván, Jacob Gómez, Isaac Galván, Erwin Morín, Jesús Lozano, Irving Díaz, Felipe Rodríguez, Jonathan Lozano. Now, we also have several players who received all district honors. We'd like to recognize our all district honorable mentions. Roy Pedraza, Orlando Fuentes, Álvaro Medrano, Carlos Espinoza, Derek Ibarra, Jacob Carrasco, Gustavo Muñoz, Alexis Gil, Hector Sainz, Fernando Garza, Robert Torres. Other all district honors for second team, we have J.C. Vargas, Ramsey Vazquez, Gerald Garza, Randy Cardoza, Robert Vera. All district honors for first team, we have Paulino Arevalo, Jaime Banuelos, Mike Gonzalez, Ramiro Aguirre, Jacob Banda, José Sánchez, and Freddie Cardenas. For 3268, there was also the Offensive Lineman of the Year, and that belongs to Mario Trevino. And an honor also for the District 3268 Most Valuable Player, Richard LaFever. We would also like to recognize our coaches, head coach Mike Burgett, with defensive coordinator and assistant head coach Rene Guzmán. We also have Jesse Trevino, offensive coordinator, Ottawa Perryman, special teams coach, Noel Villarreal, Mike Gonzalez, and Michael Brown. Those are your co-defensive coordinators. Jeff LaFever is our passing coordinator, Danny Salinas, outside linebackers coach. We have Rolie Segura, Josh Pedraza, Sergio Martínez, O-line coach, and Raymond Martínez, running backs coach. And if their parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized?
Well, boys, there's no words that I can give you all, gratitude from this board and from this city of Weslaco, you know, that we're very proud of each and every one of you for accomplishing this, especially 11 years in a row. Coach Burgett, I know you're coming up here, and I want you to say a few words before these boys walk off, but we're very thankful and grateful to y'all for all your hard work and devotion and believing in yourselves. You know, that's what we need to do, believe in ourselves. Going through life, it's a hard journey, but thanks to Coach Burgett and the rest of the coaches here, you guys are ready. You guys are ready. So I wish you all the best of luck in the future, and I know some of you all stay with us here for some more years, but those of you all that are moving on to college, good luck, and you guys are ready. Thank you, Coach, for preparing these young men for future life. And I'd like for you to say a few words.
I'm gonna start off introducing three people who is big members of our coaching staff. Not only our coaching staffs kept this team going this year. Our athletic trainers, Javi Ben Willows, Tony Muñoz, and Jojo Reese lost a coin flip, so she's at the basketball game right now. You know, I can't say enough about these three. They worked the most hours on our campus, I can tell you that. This year, we put them to the test. We had a lot of injuries. I think everybody knows about those, and these three people worked very hard. These young men standing in front of me will tell you they put a lot of hours in. So I can tell you, these three people, they need pay raises, please. Also, I want to thank Dr. Canales, who's always at our games. Her first game was an East game, and the last game this year was an East game. So thank you very much. This group would also like to thank Ms. Peterson, the assistant superintendent, who was open up East, and she's always very supportive. Thank you, Ms. Peterson. We also want to thank the board members, everything that we needed this year, including our long, long journey into the playoffs we got, and we want to thank you board members for everything you do. The coaching staff and these kids would also like to thank Big O and Andreas Cantú. Would you two please stand up? We definitely have the best A.D. in the valley, and we appreciate everything he does. In the state, they said. I want to thank my athletic secretary, Nikki. She does a lot for our programs there. I want to thank our biggest fan, Ms. Boswell, who does the cookies. I think these guys will tell you that every weekend. I want to thank my coaches, and I want to thank their wives. They put a lot of hours in, they sacrifice a lot. These guys know that they're up at the school a lot, breaking down film, and you know, I want to thank them. I want to thank my wife, Becky Burgett, because, well, she's probably happy I'm never home, but we're never home. So I want to thank the coaches and their wives. Thank you, guys. I'd like to thank these guys' parents, who entrust us with their kids to make them better people, to make them proud, to represent WISD. Thank you, parents. And finally, I'd like to thank the administration there at Weslaco East. I know they put a lot of hours in, they support these kids, and I want to thank them. So, guys, I want to make this real short. These kids, we had a rough season. We lost some great players. We lost our best running back, Bobby, in the state of Texas in my eyes, 2,000 yards coming back. We lost the number one area player, and we lost Freddie. We lost three kids. That wasn't all. During the year, we lost linemen, we lost outside linebackers, but the one thing these kids believe, next man up. These guys all lift weights, and almost all underclassmen are coming back. We got eight on defense coming back, we got six on offense. So East is here to stay. I want to thank you board members again, and thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Congratulations. Y'all can exit this way. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Very good job.
I want to move the band hall to right now. Do we need the architect, or it's just with you and it's just us? No, no, just the band. I just wanted to get the band director out of here. I think he already left. Did he leave? Yeah, he left. Se fue, ¿ves? ¿Se fue?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Probably be back in a few hours.
But I'm telling you, if we left, we don't have to worry about it.
Mr. Krev's here? Mr. Krev's gonna be here?
Hmm?
Okay, we're gonna have item number six now, proclamation of school board recognition month, January 2018. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, January 2018, the month of January is school board recognition month. We'd like you to approve a proclamation, whereas the mission of the public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democratic society and an ever-changing world. And whereas local school board members are committed to children and believe that all children can be successful learners and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of a child. And whereas local school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students. Now therefore, I, Dr. Priscilla Canales, superintendent of the Weslaco Independent School District, do hereby declare my appreciation to the members of the Weslaco ISD school board and proclaim the month of January 2018 as school board recognition month. And to the Board of Trustees with a proclamation on the behalf of your Weslaco ISD family.
Thank you, Doctor. This recognition month is unnecessary, in my opinion. We feel that we're here to serve and to help our kids get a better education, and we do appreciate it, and we thank you, and we do it because it's coming from the heart, coming straight from the heart, Doc. Thank you again. Thank you again. Would anybody else like to say anything?
Thank you. Like Monsieur Lopez said, you know, it is something that comes from the heart, and appreciate this, even though it's not necessary, but thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. Moving on to item number seven, public comments. Nobody, we did not have anybody sign up, so we'll move on with that. Moving on to item number eight, superintendent's report. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, we have three reports for this evening. Student enrollment, ADA, blended learning, and insurance in our newsletter for December 2017. So starting off with enrollment comparisons, and we're looking at year-to-year comparison. We're up by 43 students this year as compared to the same time last year. And you do have the differences for each campus, and then the positive difference for the district. In terms of enrollment comparisons on the next slide, elementaries were still down by 265, 265 children. We're up to 109 to the positive direction for middle schools, down 75 for high schools. And again, we're up in the Elfa Academy, 261, for a 43 positive difference from last year. When it comes to ADA, before I talk about ADA, as we all know, on Friday, December the 8th, 2017, we did have some snow in the area, and it did snow for an hour and a half or maybe two hours here. Although one staff member told me that's sleet, not snow, I said, we'll count it for 30 of those minutes. It was Ms. Peterson. But anyway, our attendance on December the 8th was at 77.36%, so it was low. We are gonna be submitting a waiver to the state. The state allows us that if the attendance for any particular day is 10 percentage points below the attendance for that same day the previous year, we can apply for a low attendance waiver, which we will be doing, because the attendance rate on December the 8th, 2016, was 96.74%. So of course, 77.36% is a lot less than, is a lot more than 10%. So we'll be applying for the waiver. So more on ADA.
Doc, hold on, before you go on. I just want to thank you and your staff, transportation, getting our kids out there a little later, keeping them, I guess, out of the most severe, but for a lot of these kids, you know, I think it helped. And I want to thank you and your staff for doing a great job in keeping the board informed of what was gonna transpire. So thank you.
Thank you.
Before you move on, Doctor, I want to ask you for something. Going into our enrollment.
Yes.
Could you go back, say, 10 years, and give us the enrollment? What I want to see is the pattern. I know the times are changing, and there's other factors that figure in on what we have as far as enrollment, but I would like to see where we were at and what the growth was in previous, say, 10 years ago. And then I know that at a certain time, it stopped growing, and then we started maybe going negative a little bit. And I know that we're showing some promise and showing some growth, but I know that we've done some things like the kindergartens and the Elfa Academy, which has helped us. But I just want to see what the trend was previously and where we're at now.
Okay, just, and I have, look, Mr. Raulis is shaking his head. So by year, just the year?
Yeah, just the year.
Not month by month, the year?
Yeah, just the year.
We could do that.
And then just supplement the board on a...
On the board update?
On the update. Go ahead.
Yes, on ADA, for funding purposes, we don't have a number for the 36-week year because it hasn't ended. For the second six weeks that we had, we were low compared to what we had budgeted. The report that we have on the screen shows the attendance, or the average daily attendance for the enrollment that we have. We have to make adjustments for the pre-K children, that we only get ADA on half of the year. So that is, it's a good attendance, 96% of the students that came for this past week, even though we had some problems at the end. But we'll give you until January, a report on the 36 weeks of ADA for funding purposes. That will give you a better report on how's the funding been affected by the average daily attendance of the students that count for ADA purposes.
Okay.
Okay. For our next report, we have, we're excited...
Let me have one question here. On the enrollment.
Yes, sir.
By campuses, can you put on the update how we compare with staff? In other words, teachers, counselors, secretaries, just to see where comparable. Like the elementaries, do they have, how many counselors do they have? How many assistants, administrators? Administrators? Since you, since you lost enrollment here in some of the schools, I just want to see where comparable, especially with the support staff.
Yes.
Okay, sir, we can work with HR and put a report together.
Is that it, doc?
Yes, that's it.
Anybody else? Yeah, go ahead, doctor.
Okay, for our next report, very, very proud of this initiative, which has been around for a while, but it's growing across all our campuses and causing a lot of excitement. It's the integration of the use of technology as part of the learning process. It's on blended, blended learning. And to give the report, we have Scott Omdal here, Julie Kelly, who's been instrumental in blended learning, and Carlos Martinez. So this is student success for all through blended learning.
Good evening, uh, board president, members of the board, Dr. Canales. This evening, we're going to give a, a brief presentation. You give us great support in purchasing technology. We want to update you on how we're using that to impact student success. And, and basically, this is kind of a fancy definition of blended learning. Ultimately, what it is, it's blending the best of traditional in-class instruction with, uh, amazing features of, of modern technology. So bring the best of both worlds together and blend that in a classroom setting. So the models that we're promoting right now, one is a, a stationary rotation model, which is, is common in the elementaries. You know, typically in the elementaries, we, we have, uh, a practice called centers, where kids would rotate to different centers. We're using stationary rotation in a blended learning model. And the difference is each student gets a choice. There's some choice in it. So, you know, we know our students are very unique, they're different. So we're trying to use technology to give them some choice in their learning pathways because we understand that they're, they're all unique individuals. Another model we're promoting is flipped instruction, which is pre-loading content for students through video or other means, where the, the kids would actually have that as their homework, come to class and do some collaborative activity or something to break down that, that content knowledge for better understanding. So those are the two predominant models we're, uh, promoting in the district right now. Uh, why, why blended learning? Well, first of all, we're, we're spending a, a significant amount of money on technology. We want to make sure that it's used well to impact students and we are a hundred percent confident that this is the way to do it. So we target instruction, teachers are using data to differentiate the instruction piece through, uh, technology. Uh, it's innovative. And guess what? Innovation leads to engagement. We don't want our kids sitting in class bored. The technology provides, it's, it's not, we're not trying to entertain them with technology. We're educating them through a whole bunch of different means, online resources, uh, custom-made teacher activities. And, uh, so far, the classrooms, we see blended learning and we, we see kids actively engaged and working hard to learn. So our plan, professional development i- is one important aspect, uh, increasing, uh, access to online resources. And then we're really trying to build best practices so that we can actually have a model to replicate throughout the district. Uh, professional development, this summer, our, our innovative teaching day was based on blended learning. Uh, we use blended learning to deliver the instruction. It was well received. In fact, it was so well received that some campuses are using that blended learning model with their own staff development. Uh, August, we had, uh, we also had, uh, a blended learning academy with a small group of teachers. We'll call them our early adopters, uh, our trailblazers. October, we also did blended learning on the campus innovative teaching day. Uh, currently, we're still working with teachers, campus-level trainings, district-level trainings. And coming soon, the second semester, we're going to establish a cohort of teachers. We'll call them blended learning, uh, teacher leaders that will actually be mentoring and, and, and help establishing this best practice so that we can replicate it throughout the district. Uh, as far as resources go, we have a lot of resources. We have over sixteen thousand Chromebooks in the district right now.
How many again?
Sixteen thousand, six hundred as of today. Uh, a lot of devices. Uh, we have a robust internet and Wi-Fi network, which within the next few months, we'll have one wireless access point in every single classroom throughout our district. Amazing, amazing connectivity at a level that we've never had before. We have more online resources than we've ever had.
When you say sixteen thousand, six hundred, is that for the students' use or is that, uh, staff and students?
Primarily. There's a very small number of those that are used like in staff development at the PLC, but, but primarily those are student devices. Teachers get laptops, students have Chromebooks.
So basically, one per student?
We're, we're almost there.
Awesome. Good.
And with the wealth of online resources, what we've really done with the online resources is try to make access to resources as easy as possible for students. So we have a little clever portal where kids log in and, and all their resources, or a vast majority of them are available online. So it's not this, oh, what was my password for this system? What is my password? It's all in one place to make it streamlined and easy to access. And then we are piloting some innovative. We're always looking for the latest and greatest. And the way we're approaching that is we find something we think is really great, we use it with a small number of teachers. Proof of concept. See how they like it, and if they like it, then we go to the next step. Right now, we're, we're piloting a product called NearPod, which reviews from students and staff have been fantastic with one hundred teachers. So it's something that if we, uh, further study it, something we might look to implement next year as well. So right now, we're in the process of establishing best practices. Something we did this year, y'all probably recall years ago, we had this thing called mini-grants. And we had mini-grants for, uh, innovative tech use. This year, we did blended learning grants with twenty-seven teachers. And what we're doing, teachers had to write an application, they had to apply, demonstrate that they understood blended learning, that they're willing to implement it. And in that process, we're going to help develop those teachers as, as some of our teacher leaders as well. And then we'll be starting our blended learning cohort with two teachers per campus, uh, starting second semester. And then what are, what are we expecting to, to see? We're expecting that blended learning will have an impact on, um, student performance. We expect scores to go up, attendance will go up because if school is engaging and fun, you don't want to miss. And then we'll expect that students will be more engaged and more satisfied with their learning experience. We're more bored. We don't have very many anyway, right? But we, we want, we don't want kids being bored at school. We want them leaving, can't, they can't wait to come back for the next day. Uh, teacher satisfaction, because guess what? If your students are performing and they're excited, it's fun to teach. And parent satisfaction. Your kids come home raving about how excellent it is, uh, at school, then, then parents are satisfied as well. And I'll give you a quick example of that. I, I ran into a parent at a, a district event and, uh, her child had been sick for a week. One teacher had, had been doing blended learning online and she was so excited, he came back to school. Guess what? Had done all his homework, took all his quizzes, he was ready to go. His other teacher wasn't quite as far along with the blended learning and he came back to school a little bit behind. So we want to get everybody at the same level. So if a kid has to miss school, guess what? It's all there for them. Um, and then, um, we're using a lot of data. We want data from students, we want data from parents, we want data from teachers. So we, we use data to drive this and make this the best possible, um, implementation we can.
Good.
Any questions?
Yes. Um, one of your, one of your, one of your clips here, you, you're stating robust internet and Wi-Fi network. And I know it is and, and we do, you know, for years, we've talked about how powerful and, and how adequate our, our system is and our loops and all that. What I would like to see, and I, and I, Dr. Canales, I don't know whether she has, uh, forwarded this to you all, but I'm going to go ahead and say it so that the public can know, that I would like to see, and I would like the public to see, uh, what kind of loops we have and where they located at. I mean, and the loop is actually a cable that runs in the ground and, uh, you know, I think I would like our public to know, not exactly where they're at, right? But, uh, you know, where, what, what areas we cover? What is our capacity? You know, how much are we using? What is our usage? And how, how much longer do you all anticipate before we have to upgrade or, or are we there? You know, uh, I know that when Dr. Rivera was here, I mean, it was like, uh, technology and, 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 uh, all this, uh, knowledge and of technology was, was forefront and, and moving forward. And we, we all want to make sure that it stays that way. You know, we want to be the best, we want to have the best. And, uh, you know, so first of all, I'd like to get some information, you know, update the board on where we're at with our, with our internet. And, and of course, this is good news that we have sixteen hundred Chromebooks. You know, now, are, are those Chromebooks in good order or are they, what's their age?
For the most part, I, I think we did a report, we did an end-of-life report. We have about six hundred that this year became end of life, but they're still working. They're still in use. The, uh, they're considered, they're five years old, they're considered, you know, at this point, you can push aside, but, but they are, are in fine shape.
So we're in good shape there?
We're in great shape. Absolutely.
Just, we would just like to have, you know, a...
Get your report.
Uh, some, some in-depth report of, of where, where our, our internet is. You know, and, and everything, the whole systems that you all, I know there's more words that I don't know, of where your systems are at, you know? And before we, we fall behind. We, I, that's one thing that, that this board does not want to happen, for, for us to fall behind on technology. You know, so make sure that, that, that whatever you all need to stay at the front, that it comes before this board.
Absolutely.
Okay?
I have a question. Like for, uh, I know for a lot of kids in the Colonias, you know, some of them may not have any Wi-Fi or anything like that. Do we have any, uh, like Chromebooks or iPads or something that they can check out and take home?
Uh, we, we do. At, at some campuses, they're checking them out. In fact, I know at East High School, they check them out with, with, uh, a little hotspot. And we do have hotspots for certain, we have a small number of hotspots we can check out.
Good, then what next question?
We've also mapped the, the, we've mapped the city. All the free Wi-Fi we have on a map that's on our website. So if they're close to Burger King or they're close to J.T. Penny or Walmart, I actually saw a student at Walmart not too long ago sitting on a bench there with a device, working on his homework, so.
Really?
We have done that map. And then we do have some limited amount of, uh, devices to check out for, uh, Wi-Fi access.
If you can just get that information, uh, along with Mr. Lopez's, uh, as far as speed and capabilities.
Are they allowed to check out at the elementaries or at the middle schools or is it only at the high schools?
It's a school decision, it varies by school. I know, I know there's, there are some campuses that are doing some checkout. We can, we can pull the campuses and get, get you a list of the campuses that are doing checkout on, on devices.
I just be, kind of need to have it available to all the kids, you know? I mean, I know there's some kids that want to, you know, take a, maybe a Chromebook home or whatever, you know?
Absolutely.
Fifth grader or...
And we do have, uh, early college high school, for their freshmen, they actually have a device they're taking home. They're doing one-to-one with, with that group. And so they take the device with them, they take it home, bring it back to school, and they are using that with about one hundred students at early college. Kind of our pilot to test it out for the one-to-one take home.
Oscar, I know that, uh, both high schools probably, students do check them out like on a weekend basis, depending, or a day, depending on where, what they need them for. But they do have access.
Okay. Absolutely.
Sounds good. Just real quick, one more thing. I know I, I read on the paper a couple, maybe a week or two ago about McAllen ISD. And one of the, uh, I guess, providers that they have, I, I think it was AT&amp;T that they, they, they have as their carrier. And they were able to negotiate something to, uh, have like, uh, a very low, uh, payment for Wi-Fi for all these, like, uh, low-income family. I don't know if there's something that we can do here to, uh, offer that same thing, you know? Maybe, I think Verizon is our...
Service provider.
Our service provider? Right. Verizon is our main carrier. Well, it's actually, um, another foremost now. But, uh, we have looked at AT&amp;T because similar outer boundaries of Westaco belong in the AT&amp;T and they do qualify for the low, low cost. But we've also been applying for, for a grant to get more hotspots for the Verizon or foremost, uh, area. So, uh, we are looking at that also.
All right. Sounds good then.
And I am also working on a board update for all the fiber optics, so I'll be able to tell you usage and everything. And if I need to present, we can, we can present in future meeting with you.
Perfect, Carlos.
Thank you, Carlos.
Again, like when I started, I know that I had asked our superintendent, so y'all were working on it, but I wanted the, the board to know that, that y'all were working on that and, and getting ready to present. If it's ready in January, then, then, uh, we'll, we'll see it there.
Okay.
Can you put a question?
Thank you, guys, for the presentation.
Thank you.
Go ahead, doctor.
Okay, the, uh, third item that we'll report on is insurance and the newsletter, and, uh, Mr. De La Rosa will lead us through that.
Good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Canales, members of the board. Uh, this is the standard slide that, uh, we present every month, uh, comparing this year's, uh, claims, prescription drugs and fis- fixed cost expenses to last year. And I'll just go ahead and, uh, and, uh, abbreviate on the numbers here. So basically, as far as medical claims, uh, last year at this time, uh, we spent three point seven million dollars in claims. So of course, we always include last year's runout in, in this month's reporting period because it's actually paid, uh, in these months. So current medical claims for Blue Cross and Blue Shield, uh, came out to one point four million dollars. Uh, and the freight's runout, uh, came out to one point one million dollars for a grand total of two point five million dollars. That's an approximate decrease of one point two million dollars in claims that we've experienced so far in the first three months of the fiscal year. Prescription drugs, uh, last year at this time, at eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Uh, this year, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. That's an approximate decrease of about twenty-six thousand dollars in less than RX claims. Uh, for fixed costs, last year at this time, it was forty-four, four hundred and forty-four seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars, uh, versus this year, and I haven't broken out by the, uh, Blue Cross, Blue Shield admin fees and of course, the runout fees we have to pay to the, uh, prior TPA. Seven thirty-three, six sixty-two, uh, for Blue Cross and two hundred and twelve thousand, one ninety-seven, uh, for freight's runout. That'll conclude the runout period for our prior TPA. There are no longer processing claims, uh, everything is, is in the books, if you will. Uh, that's a, uh, total cost of nine hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars, excuse me. That's an approximate increase of, uh, four hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. So overall, plan years this time, this last year, uh, little, just a little over five million dollars. Uh, so far this year, just a little over four point two million dollars. That's about a seven hundred and forty thousand dollar savings that we've seen so far versus this year versus last year.
Looks good.
As our workers' compensation, uh, program goes, this is the standard slide that I show, uh, the board. In years, in the prior, uh, months, we've reported that we funded five hundred thousand dollars for sixteen seventeen and seventeen eighteen. That number is actually a little overinflated. When we actually inputted the percentages into the payroll system, the actual total amount came out to three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, not five hundred thousand dollars that we funded. But that didn't affect us at all. We still have plenty of reserves. Claims, this year versus last year, uh, we had thirty-seven versus thirty-three. Total, total claims, prescription drugs, admin, uh, indemnity services incurred through November, uh, just a little, uh, little under sixty-four thousand dollars versus last year, a hundred and twenty-one thousand, one sixty-seven. So what we actually paid checks out the door in the month of November, inclusive of all plan years, twenty-three thousand, uh, seventy-six dollars. Last year at this same time, it was thirty-six thousand, five sixty-eight for the month of November. So we've got about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in reserves in our workers' comp program.
Okay, explain to me a little bit better on the five hundred to three fifty-six. What happened there?
The percentages that we, it's, it's a percentage of payroll that we fund, uh, the plan, so the board approved five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, but when we went in and we actually inputted the percentages into, uh, the payroll system because it's a percentage of payroll is what we collect. So the percentages that we entered at the end of the year didn't equal to five hundred thousand, they equal to three hundred and fifty-six thousand. Like I said, which is fine, we're still in very good shape with the workers' comp. So actually, we spent less than we intended to, so a little bit of savings there.
So the hundred and forty-four thousand dollars stayed in the general fund or...
It's in the workers' comp fund, the seven-seven-zero account. We can't intermingle, 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 uh, those funds, excuse me. So they stay in that account.
Well, you said, wait a minute. No, I'm talking about the money that did not get transferred.
No, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
It will stay on the respective budgets for the local state or federal, whatever the payroll pay, they pay less than we thought. If it had had five hundred thousand, it would have been a higher contribution. It was actually less. So they kept the money at the respective schools or departments and the local state or federal funds.
Is there anything that we need to do? Because you all didn't transfer the five, uh, transfer...
No, because we had enough money with the money we collected.
No, I understand, but the board approved to transfer half a million dollars and you all transferred three fifty-six.
Well, uh, in, in essence, the board, the way it was approved was three hundred and fifty-six because that was the way the budget was presented. The intention was half a million. And we told you that we were gonna budget the same amount.
Okay.
Now that the board told us, make it this, we tried to make it like that, we just didn't check the numbers correctly. But what was actually approved was 356, rounded, by the way it is reflected in the payroll budget.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that if we approved something and you did something else, we don't have to make a.
Not because, we did not have a agenda specifically to designate that we had to contribute such an amount. We just said, we're gonna contribute half a million like we had before, but the actual approval was with the actual amount in the budget, which was only 356.
Okay.
Mike, the difference, all-inclusive meaning whatever we've had on the books, correct?
Yes, all-inclusive.
Did we have people come off that were down from 36 to 23?
It's just, we have been spending less over the last couple of years on comps, so there are less claims out there. For example, last week in our report, we had absolutely nobody on TIPS, which is temporary income benefits, which is the first time I've ever seen that in the time I've been here, where we have nobody out and we're paying them temporary income benefits. So that's one, one reason.
Good.
Okay, well, I know we got our newsletter that we've been asking for a long time.
Yes.
I don't know if it's in the budget or not in the budget, but I like to keep those claims going down. So remember, we used to have that safety out of Mike's office, you know.
We have, we have these award, the incentive program. We do have that. We have the safety incentive that we, that we give out. We give out to employees at the end of the year if they're accident-free. The awards have been very good, so employees actually look forward to it and compete for them. So I believe last year, we gave out a jacket, and I'm not sure what we're gonna do for, for this coming school year, but.
Okay, well, again, I wanna, safety first. So if you need that spot, and we have budgeted for that spot. If not, then continue to work.
Oh, the, oh, you're talking about the position?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. It's not budgeted?
Not budgeted.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
On the newsletter, how did you get it out to the, our teachers?
It's gonna be a mass email tomorrow, and that, that was the next item on the agenda. I was gonna present the, the newsletter that we did. This is the, the second issue that we've generated this year, or this month. We concentrated on proper lifting techniques. So there's a lot of useful information about back care, keeping your back straight, you know, lift with your legs, not your back. Also, some other information that we included, we will be doing the blood screenings when we get back from vacation, when we get back from the Christmas break. Those are scheduled. And just some other various, and some other information regarding the open enrollment that just wrapped up. So this will be emailed to all staff tomorrow, but we just wanted to present it to the board before it went out to, to staff.
Good, looks good.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. I have one question, Mike. The diet that you're on, is it on here or no?
No.
It's next month.
Still in the process, huh?
In process.
Well, another comment I have is on the health insurance. Looks like you're doing a good job. Numbers are, are down. How much did, did we save in three months?
Right now, on medical claims, it looks like it's about 1.2 million, so. Most, well, three years ago, we were, we were looking real good. I don't wanna, you know, jump up and down and take a, you know, take a victory lap just yet, because there's still a lot of, there's still a lot of time to go in our claims.
Have you seen a decrease in claims?
Really, it's about, there's some data that I'm pending from, from the new TPA where I can really, that, that, that I need to get, but I think the claims have been about the same. But without a real thorough analysis, I, I'd wanna give too much information or speculate, if you will.
Well, it's saving us money, so that's great.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Moving on to item number nine, consent agenda. Now start at my left. If anybody has anything to pull, Dr. Rodriguez?
I got it.
Dr. Rivera?
I'd like to pull item Q.
Okay. Isidoro?
No.
Oscar?
No, sir.
Andrew?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception, exception of item Q.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Isidoro, and a second by Dr. Rodriguez to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item Q. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Dr. Rivera?
Yes, on Q, who monitors Q?
Excuse me?
Who monitors the system?
Myself, Juan Relles. There are a few people that monitor it.
Now, on the rationale, you mentioned that you had almost 1,200 emergency calls.
It's.
What kind of calls were those, would those be?
It could be.
Emergency now.
Power outage to the campus, or no water to the campus. I know they were emergencies, but it's, not necessarily are all emergencies. It's just how they, how they, how the principals made the call. So they may have selected emergency, because you could do emergency, or general, or non-emergency. But I just gave the list from the report, but most of them were maybe no water, or no power.
Carlos, I think during the hurricane, I think we got, we got messages on our phone as well.
You got messages on your phone, too?
Yeah, that, I think when, I guess there was no school, or there were gonna be early release. I can't remember what happened, but there was some stuff from the hurricane.
And this company is from California? Was there a Texas company?
When we did our.
Since 2013, I believe.
Right, we've been using it. This will be the fifth year we've been using it. I haven't heard any complaints from the campuses. We built our own databases to, to work with this, to automate it with the phone calls and everything, so principals get their reports daily from all attendance calls. And so far, it's doing everything we need. There's another part we can actually add on, and I'll probably be meeting the principals or their staff on, we can add social media to the school messenger at no extra cost.
We're paying, we're paying $26,000. Has it increased every year?
Actually, it has not increased.
No, hasn't increased. Does this system provide, I know that when I was here, we had the TIPS hotline. Is this part of this system?
No, it's not part of this system.
We don't have that anymore?
We actually.
For employees to call in?
We do have a TIPS on the web, but we don't have the TIPS hotline like we used to.
Can you check into that?
Yes.
Just, just to give the board information on it.
Yes.
Sometimes, sometimes I can tell you about, I can say, look, this kid here has drugs, this kid has something, so there's always information that can be useful.
Okay.
I think, I think there is something on the web, but I, I think only the principal gets it, if I'm correct.
Mrs. Peterson?
He can report bullying on the web, yes.
There is, she's, Mrs. Peterson's looking at me and saying, we do have that. I know we have the bullying on the web, the hotline. Do you wanna speak a little about what we do have, Mrs. Peterson?
Norma Brewer set that up this fall for students to report bullying, drugs, anything on campus. So it's available on the internet, on our website.
Are the parents aware?
Yeah.
That this exists?
I. I can't tell you that for sure. I know we've.
Me as a parent, I'm sorry, but I know we went to a meeting at Cuero with Mr. Rodriguez, and he made everybody aware of, you know, what we have out there to, you know, offer, you know, all the Google Classroom, all the. And that was one of the things that he brought up, the, the, on the web. That's why I'm aware of that.
I know the principals have been informed that it's there and been asked to share, that information out. The counselors know that it's there. Social workers know that it's there, so that they're sharing it with students that they're working with.
Okay.
The only question that I had is, is, I think, and I, I don't think Freddie could answer that question that day, but when, when somebody reports a bullying or something, does it actually just stay within the campus as far as the principal? Or does it, like, administration, somebody in administration get a copy as, on that?
Depending on, there are certain words that, that key through. The principal gets a notice, and then there are other people that get notified.
Oh, okay.
To make sure that someone sees it right away.
Exactly, right.
I'm okay. Do you approve?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you. Have a motion by Dr. Rivera, and a second by Andrew to approve item Q of the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Before we move on, on, on the same consent agenda, on item B, there was an item that, that was added, was it added, Doctor, or what was this?
It was, it was added after the packet. We received it, the addendum. It's for a trip for our migrant students.
Okay.
So it wasn't part of the original packets. It's, it's an addendum. We'd like to get that, make sure that that's approved as well.
Yes, it's not on the original packet that we received, so, so the superintendent just wants to ensure that, that we're aware and have the information which is, has been handed to you all.
Needs to be approved.
Does it need any form of motions?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Andrew, and a second by Isidoro to approve the added item, which was not included in the, in our packets, but was included in the agenda.
Correct.
Is there anything I need to add? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Moving on to. Item 10, discussion items. Item A is first reading of policy update 109 from Texas Association of School Boards, Tasby. Dr. Gonzalez.
Board of Trustees, we have several local policies for the first reading. I think there's about 17 local policies. You have received this from Mr. Garcia in the update at least two weeks ago. At this point, Mr. Garcia is here, and so is staff. If you have any questions about any of them, they range from board member requests for records and visits to campuses, clarification on procedures that follow just regular ones with visitors, to investments, to patriotic societies, speaking to students. So, and they're all aligned with legal.
It was good on the update. We had very good information.
Yes.
I know there's no motion, but I'm, I'm okay with these local policies.
Okay. And I do wanna thank you, Dr. Rivera and Mr. Kennedy. They are on the policy committee, so I consulted with them on how we wanted to proceed with presenting the policies to, to you for the first reading.
Right.
Do you have any questions, again, as I stated, on the update?
I think you did a good job. It was very clear, and I know that you followed through, so unless you have some other added information you wanna give us, we're good to, to move on.
Okay.
Good job with it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item B, interim financial report for the three months ended November 30th, 2017. Dr. Gonzalez.
Board of Trustees, we have Mr. Andres Sanchez for this item.
Yes. Mr. Lopez, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the board, on the financial report for the three months ended November 30th, 2017, in the general fund. We had budgeted $172,082,000 total revenues, and we have received $47,845,000, which represents 27.4%. The local revenues are only $2 million, because taxes haven't picked up a lot. December and January, we should get a lot more. But that is what we have right now. The, the numbers are good so far compared to other years, and compared to the number of months we're in right now. We're at three months, which will represent 25% of the year. We collected 27% overall. On the expenditures, the total expenditures, it's $170,474,000, and we have spent or encumbered $39,214,000, which represents 23%. Again, that one is below the 25, so it's, it's well, the, the pace that we have.
Any questions?
Is it quarterly?
No, every month.
Every month?
I understand, because we're at, November is one quarter of the year, 25%. So the 23% spent out of 25 is below the, the mark.
Dr. Rivera, I know you had the financial.
For, for three months, Andres, any of these functions, are we under budget or over budget on any of these so far, for three months?
No, not in a solid that we're under budgeted, but on function 34 and 35, in 36, we're a little over, especially 34, transportation, and 35, food services, because the payment on the, the buying the fuel, that is a lot more, and we're doing the ACE program after school. And the bulk of the trips is during the school year. So June, July, and August, we don't have a lot, so the, the expenditures slow down later on. So it's more at the beginning, but less at the end, so eventually throughout the year it'll be good. And food service.
Monitor function 11, the instruction, to make sure that the principals and staff get what they need?
Yes, sir.
It's very important for our kids.
Well, we work with them, and when they need something, request something, we, we work with them. We, we have money available to, to work with them. Unless it's something major that we need to bring to the board, we'll do it. Otherwise, we'll, we'll handle it ourselves.
Another thing, Andres, you need to keep in, in mind is moving forward, I know we have several construction projects which we're getting ready to kick off and, and put out to bids and all that. I'm afraid with all the catastrophes that we've had here nationwide, with fires in California, and hurricanes in Florida, and in, and in Texas, that some of those primary budgets that we had are out the door, out the window. And moving forward, just keep, keep in mind that some of those primary, preliminary numbers that we had might go higher than we anticipated. You know, at that point, we're either gonna have to make a decision to proceed, or, or cut back somewhere. But I don't wanna cut back, of course, we can't cut back on our education part, not, and, and, or hold back a little bit, you know, so just keep in mind, or find some money.
Yeah.
You know, so keep that in mind, that we, we've probably gone, gone across that bridge sooner than, than we know.
Yes. We, we have, on the report, we have someone, the architect, they have told us that the estimate we had were low.
Yeah.
And the, the number that had come up with the estimates that we had in the presentations have been a lot higher than what we had in several of them. So we're still okay. I'm working on a report that I'll put in the update on Friday, after the, the audit, since it's completed. I'm working on the amount that we have, on fund balance assigned for facility, to make sure that we have money for all the projects that we have.
Right.
And I'm working on that. I'll have it ready in the update on Friday.
Okay, good. Thank you. Item C, acknowledgement of Hidalgo County Tax Office collection report for November 2017, current taxes and delinquent taxes. Dr. Gonzalez.
Board of Trustees, I believe we're withdrawing this one from the agenda because we did not receive the report.
We did not get the report from the county. We were supposed to get it in the afternoon.
Okay.
And then they're getting an email saying we finished it, but it not certified, so we cannot release it, so.
Okay, so we'll bring it back at a later time?
On, on January.
Ivan, is there any action we need to conduct?
No, this was a discussion item only.
Item D, announcement of continuing education credit for board members. Dr. Gonzalez.
Board of Trustees, it is my recommendation that the Board of Trustees review the certified board member training hours as reported by the Texas Association of School Boards. As required by the State Board of Education, the following rule for announcing board member credit is as follows. Annually, at least at the regular board meeting held during a calendar year, the current president of each local school board of trustees shall announce the name of each board member who has completed the required continuing education, who has exceeded the required hours of continuing education, and who is deficient in the required continuing education as of the date of the meeting. The announcement shall state that completing the annual required continuing education is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member under State Board of Education rule. So at this time, Mr. Lopez, I ask that you announce the name of each board member who has completed, exceeded, or is deficient, and we do have a table there for that.
Okay. Okay, according to the table before me, on the hours of continuing education for each board member, we'll start with Mr. Caballero. The minimum in tier two was six, and descriptionary tier three is 24.5, total of 30.5 hours. I believe, if I'm reading this correctly, Doctor, the six was the minimum? Is that correct?
For tier, for tier two, for the team-building goal-setting.
Okay. And on Daniel, who's Daniel Gonzalez? On Andrew Gonzalez, also, he, he needed six hours, and, and then in tier one, tier two, and tier three, 21.25. He completed 27.25. Tier, and then moving on to Patrick Kennedy, in tier two, he did six hours, and tier three, he did 13 hours for a total of 20.5 hours.
And as a new trustee, Mr. Kennedy also had to complete the hours for new board member training.
Right.
With orientation, which he did.
Which he also did. And on, on myself, Arsmo Lopez, I did, I had six hours, tier two, 24, tier three, that's a total of 30 hours. Isidoro Nieto, six hours, tier two. And 28 hours, tier three, for a total of 34 hours. Dr. Richard Rivera, six hours, tier two, 31.25, tier three, total 37.25. And Dr. Jaime Rodriguez did 3.5 hours, tier one of orientation, new board member orientation, did six hours, tier two, and 12 hours, tier three, for a total of 24.5. I guess that's all the report that we have on, on this item. It appears that everybody did complete the minimum required. Is that correct?
Yes, it does.
So, looks good. I know that we went to several conferences, and, which we did, we did learn, and we moved forward. Is there any action we need to do on that, Ivan?
No.
Okay. Just, we did go, and we did continue our education. Okay, item 11, discussion and possible action items. A, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval to change a regular board meeting scheduled on January 8th, 2018. Dr. Gonzalez.
Board of Trustees, after talking to staff, we're looking, January 8th, 2018 is the first day back after the Christmas break for all staff. We would request that you consider moving that board meeting to the following Monday, January the 15th, 2018.
It makes sense. Motion to approve. Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Isidoro Nieto to move the meeting from January the 8th to what date it was given?
January the 15th.
To January the 15th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. B, Discussion and Possible Action for the Board to Consider Approval of the Annual Financial and Compliance Audit Report for the Fiscal Year Ended August 31st, 2017. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, the audit report covers the fiscal year from September 1st, 2016 to August 31st, 2017. TEA requires that all school districts in Texas hire an independent auditor, CPA, to audit the financial statements and financial records of the school district annually. The report must be completed, approved by the board, and submitted to TEA within 150 days from the end of the fiscal year, August 31st, which puts us, the deadline at January 28th, 2018, for us to be in compliance. So the auditor issued a management letter, well, the auditor is here. His, Mr. Noel Garza, CPA. He was hired by the board, July 6th, 2017, and he's going to make the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. President.
Anything new that's not here?
Monday.
Anything new that's not here?
Anything, no, sir. No, it's exactly the way it is. Dr. Canales, members of the board, good evening. As you mentioned, Dr. Canales, my name is Noel Garza. I'm the principal of Noel Garza CPA, and I was hired by yourselves to conduct the annual financial audit for the West Coast Independent School District as of August 31st, 2017. As you mentioned, the audit report is required annually for all Texas school districts, and it is due at the end of January. And so we are, the district, as is usual, is very ahead of the game and has, you know, had things in place to afford us to be able to complete the audit very early. And so with that said, I would like to cover a few items in the report. It's a very lengthy document, as you see. We'll cover just some basic information that is, would be considered relevant to you all, and to try to keep it as short as possible. First, if you would please, on page two is the auditor's opinion. And this opinion is the, is our opinion on the financial report and the financial status of the district as of August 31st, 2017. And without going into a whole lot of detail, you'll notice that the last paragraph on that page does state in, and I'll paraphrase it, that we do believe that these financial statements are a fair representation of the annual, of the financial condition of the West Coast Independent School District as of August 31st, 2017. And so we say this is considered an unmodified or unqualified opinion, where we did not find any financial items that needed to be brought to your attention or modifications made to the financial statements to bring them into compliance. That we felt very comfortable with the reports and do all our analysis and testing. We do feel that there are, these are fair representation of the actual financial status on that day and activity for the 2017 fiscal year. So that's the highest rendering you can receive in an audit report. There are four different classifications, and the unmodified, unqualified is the highest one. And so it's a, it's a very important to note that that's, that is the highest rendering that you can receive. And as has been in the past few years, the district has managed to maintain that because they have very, very strong internal controls in place, and they're reflected in the financial statements. So that's a, that's a very important part. If you then, if you wouldn't mind, members of the board, Dr. Canales, on page 13 is your balance sheet for all the governmental funds. And when I say governmental, we, the funds are divided into governmental and proprietary, and I'll cover them just briefly. Page, on page 13, the first column is your general fund. And of course, as y'all recall, and perhaps for the sake of Dr. Rodriguez, the general fund is the fund by which the majority of all expenditures, all operations for the district are conducted and are paid for through the general fund. So it is your, it is the biggest fund and the one that provides most funding. So just to highlight a few points here, you'll notice that in that first column, your general fund total assets ended the year at 60 million, just over 60 million, and your liabilities at 7.6 million. And of course, the number at the, towards the bottom, the final number that is of interest is the fund balance. And the district ended the year at $48.3 million in fund balance. Now, the other columns next to that, the tax note is for new construction that was going, the tax notes that were sold to be able to perform some construction. And the other funds is a combination of all the other special revenue funds and construction and debt service that the district has, which are identified further in the report in very, very detailed, very, you know, a lot of detail, and so that way you can see at any point in time where all the different funds are, that make up that other column. And then, so then in total is your total column, which is a combination of all funds that the district has at its discretion to be able to utilize to educate the children. So that $48 million in fund balance is comprised of various categories, and you'll notice that it's broken down into several. The first being non-spendable inventory, which means that at the end of the year, the district had invested in inventories, 960,000. There were some prepaid items, typically it's insurance that's paid in August for September or for perhaps more into the new year, at 1.3 million. Restricted for grants, just over 5 million. Those are state grants that have special earmarks, and that those funds can only be utilized for those, those specific type of children. And so those monies are categorized and utilized for them, so they'll carry forward into the next year. Then there's the other assigned fund balance, which is what you all, as a board, have, and the administration have committed to projects, most specifically construction, future construction projects. And that number stands at 23.3 million. And then your unassigned, undesignedated is your, is basically your available fund balance. And that stands at 17 and a half million. And so in combination, you have 48.3, 48.3 million. The 23 million is the number that you all have, over time, have assigned for various construction. And then the 17.5 is available for your, for use as you see fit, or to save, as some people call this, a rainy day fund. And therefore, you keep it there for unforeseen emergencies or projects that, goals or implementations that the district sees fit to undertake.
What was the amount again, the rainy day fund?
17.5 million, doctor. It was 17 million last year, so you increased it by half a million over the 16-year.
And what is your three months?
The three months, actually, it's right around $40 million. So in terms of having.
So we don't have the three months reserved?
Not in the unassigned itself. You do have in the assigned, you have 23 million. So in combination, you, the combination of those two is the 40 million. But you all have decided to use the 23 million for future construction or have assigned it as such. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean it will be, because you have the discretion to reassign it or unassign it. And so in total, you do have the 40. But of the truly unavailable, unassigned, it's at one month's, roughly, just a month and a month and a third, I believe, of funds available. So one goal that I would, that I'm sure you're very aware, and the administration has shared with you, is trying to get that unassigned number up to a more comfortable level, somewhere in the two to three range, which is what TEA recommends. But in your situation, where you have relied on that for construction without, so that you don't have to burden your taxpayers with bond issues and bond issues and bond issues, so you've chosen to use your fund balance to be able to meet these goals and not having to undertake this additional debt. So, but you do have it available if you choose to reassign it, Dr. Rivera, to make it a part of your rainy day fund or your nest egg for the future. Now, how did we get there? If you'll turn to page 15, you'll see that, again, the first, the first column, excuse me. The first column, this is your income statement. Technically, it's called a Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance. But an improper term would be income statement for terms of, in terms of a school district. But you'll notice in the general fund, your total revenues came in at $166 million for the year, and that's comprised of state, local, and federal. And you'll notice that the state is by far the largest contributor in the general fund to your educating the children. And then the local and the federal come in second and third, respectively. The federal is primarily your child nutrition program with a few other smaller grants included. And of course, the local is your primary, your local taxpayer and other local sources of revenues that are generated throughout the year. So what, 166 million is what was received. And if you'll follow down that same column, you'll notice that the total expenditures came in at 159 million. Now, you'll notice that it's broken down into various categories and functional categories, education being the largest, and instruction, and also down the line, transportation, food services, plant and maintenance, operations. But by far the largest is instruction, which I know is the goal of the board, to put as much funding into the classroom as possible, so that you can educate the children. And so you can see that it's, you know, more than 50% of the total expenditures goes into the classroom or to cover expenses associated with the classroom. All right. Now, what does, what does all that mean? It, in this particular year, you had excess revenues of 7.2 million dollars, revenues over expenditures. Now, along with that, the district sold bonds during the year and also issued a refunding. So you'll notice the next category, there's bond issues, bond proceeds, and some premium and discount on bonds, and then transfers out, which were transferred over to the debt service to refund bonds. So when you take those into consideration, there was more money used than there was that was brought in. So 5,165,000 more was transferred out to cover debt and construction, then was brought in. So when you reduce that number from the 7.2, that leaves your net change for the year at just over $2 million. So what does all that mean? It means you increased your fund balance over the last year by 2.1 million dollars. Okay? The last two numbers in that column, you'll notice, you began the year at 46.2 and ended the year at 48.3. And those numbers were broken down on the previous page. But, so you did have an overall increase despite having to use some, some of the revenues for construction and some for bond issue debt. You still managed to increase your fund balance by $2 million. So anytime you can increase fund balance, you did good. You didn't dip into it, you didn't decrease it. So you've added to your reserves for future, and so that's always a positive. And still managed to meet all your goals and all your, and all your, all the agenda items that you had presented. The other columns are noted as well, and, but they're, you know, they're delineated also in further in the back. The next page that I would like to cover with you, which I know would be important for you, is page 17, which is your Budget to Actual Comparison. So this column, this budget, I'm sorry, this worksheet, it compares your original budget, your final budget to the actual, and this is, again, just strictly the general fund. And so you'll notice how the budget was amended during the year. So it, that's why we show two. And then the actual column is the third column. So you'll see that in the revenue section, your budgeted revenues originally were 168 million, and they were slightly decreased, but just under 100,000 during the year. And, but what actually materialized, excuse me, was 166 million. So you fell short of your, of your budget by 1.7 million dollars. And the bulk of that came from the state. And that was typical, that was a big component of that, was the summer days, how many days you had in the new year versus what you had in the old year. And so when you have that change, it adjusts the revenues received this year. Not to say you're not going to receive the funding, but it just gets pushed over to the next year rather than get reported in this year. So that was the bulk of that decrease there. And then the further, the columns, the rows, I'm sorry, the last column shows you your variances, and all the, on all the functional categories, you notice there were some funds that were budgeted but not utilized. And again, that helps contribute to your savings, because not everything that you had expected to use was used. The bulk of it coming in instruction, and as I've mentioned in previous years, typically that's from vacancies that don't get filled. And, or you have, you have, you have budgeted for positions at a, you know, at a certain pay scale, and then when someone, the position gets filled, it gets filled because of the experience of the individual. It may get filled at a different salary, so you may realize some savings there. And so overall, it, you generated some savings. And in the different, the other different categories, keep in mind that a lot of the savings comes from the careful spending. The district has a very good system of internal controls, where all expenditures are highly monitored, they're approved. There's a whole lot of approval processes that have to be followed before any dollars can be spent. And so that also, and of course, it's, all comes from your, from your instruction. So the district manages to really keep tabs on all this spending in order to try to save, to save funding for yourselves, but also for your taxpayers. Because the last thing you want to do is have to come back and raise taxes, you know, to meet your goals. And this way, you can, by carefully controlling your expenditures, you're able to meet those goals and still have funds available for increasing your fund balance. So that covers the general fund. Now, the other fund that I wanted to cover with you is on the next two pages, 18 and 19. And, excuse me, the column that I wanted, in these two pages, what I wanted to talk to you about was your self-insurance fund. And I'll just take a moment to cover it. I know Mr. De La Russa spoke to it earlier. The first column is your self-insurance fund. The balance sheet is on the left page, page 18, shows your total assets, liabilities. And in this, in this case, it's considered net position or retained earnings. Shows you where it was on that particular day. But what I wanted to cover was on page 19, your first column shows the revenues that were received in the insurance fund, payments that went out to cover claims, and then where that left you in terms of your fund balance, to use the term loosely. So you'll notice that you received 14.5 million dollars in premiums, but the district had a claims of 18.6 million dollars. So there was 4.1 million dollars of claims that, the claims exceeded your revenues by 4.1 million. Now, the question comes, how does that occur? Well, it all comes, boils down to the premiums that were set in the previous year during the budget process. When the staff may come to make recommendations to you on setting the premiums for the coming fiscal year. And then through your approval process, the rate is set. And that rate is then used to determine the premiums that the employees will pay for family coverage, they may contribute to their individual coverage, but also, more importantly, what the different funds will contribute for the employees for their insurance premiums. If you recall, the district pays the vast majority of the insurance premium for the employees. And you, as a district, have the luxury of having a variety of funding sources, federal, state, and local. And so by having, setting a premium in such a manner where these different funds contribute to your, to your premiums to help cover these costs, is how you generate the revenue. So, so what happened this year was that the premiums weren't set at the rate that they probably should have been set at. So you had a shortfall. And of course, we never know where the, where the claims are going to come in at. You know, some years are, there's more claims than others. And this particular year, there was a size, there was a large amount of claims. Now, it's always a difficult process to determine where the claims, where the premium should be set. And that's something that I know you discuss during your budget processing. And, but the one thing that I wanted to comment, and I'll talk to you, I also included a separate management letter that addresses this, was the, you know, was maximizing that premium, taking advantage of the different funding sources that you have at your disposal to be able to help pay for those premiums. Okay? So this, this number here was concerning to me because of the amount of the shortfall that there was. Last year, it was just over a million dollars. So it's quadrupled from the previous year. And so at this point, the hard part is that your general fund is going to have to cover this 4.1 million dollars. You can't go back and have the different funding sources contribute, because that year's closed. You can't go back and change the premium that you charged at that point. So you're going to have to dip into your fund balance to cover this. And I think it's, they'll probably have to bring a budget amendment to you to allow for that transfer.
Besides this year, how many other years have we had to go into a fund balance to cover the expenses?
Last year, you did, Dr. Rivera, just over a million dollars.
So every year?
I don't remember prior to that, we hadn't, it's the last two. Okay. So again, that's, you know, as the costs of medical care had just, you know, continued to rise and rise and rise, it's something. rise, it's something that, you know, I know you all will want to take into consideration when you're setting your premiums, because it's one of those costs that just won't go down. And of course, if your employee population is aging, of course, there could be continued rise in costs there also. So, this is one of those difficult ones. But I really recommend, as you get to your budget process, to try to take advantage of the different funding sources. You know, it's a difficult process for you to be able to set a premium, because you don't, the last thing you want to do is raise premiums on employees and all that. But for those, to take advantage of the different funding sources that you have, something that you want to do if you can. Because if you can have the federal government pay for their fair share of those costs, even though the state may have to raise also the local, but whatever share can be shifted over to the federal government, that's that many dollars less that you have to take from your local funds. So, I know that with Dr. Canales and Mr. Sanchez, when they come back to you with the budget recommendations, that's something that you'll want to take a look at and make sure you feel comfortable with the decisions you make, and that way, your taxpayers aren't overly burdened, but yet you take advantage of all the funding that's available to you to help cover these costs.
Dr. Rivera, I know you're pretty clear on exactly what he's saying, but Andres and Mike, are you all clear on what he's saying using the different funding costs?
Yes.
Okay.
There's, I won't cover it at this point, but at the very last page of this audit report, is a separate letter that I've issued to you all that talks a little bit about this. And so, at your discretion, I've shared it with Dr. Canales and Mr. Sanchez. It's just, you know, a little bit, I tried to put it in as brief a paragraph as I could to help you understand and try to understand what we need to, what I'm recommending that you all may want to do.
So, there's one recommendation only?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, all the work, you did just one recommendation?
The, yes, our goal is not to try to find items, but if they come up, we identify them. But we're very satisfied, Dr. Rivera, with the...
Let me ask you this, of the big school districts, how many have independent auditors or internal auditors?
Internal auditors?
The big districts?
The larger the district, the more likely to have an internal auditor. Yes, sir.
Do you recommend one here?
You have a position called a compliance auditor, but because of staffing restrictions, that position is utilized a lot to manage day-to-day accounting functions and not utilized as to its fullest capacity as a compliance auditor. And so, one thing that I've recommended over the last several years was trying to add the staffing necessary to be able to alleviate the stress of additional work to that compliance auditor, so that they can perform the audit function.
On this report, you didn't do any on the activity funds?
A recommendation? No, I did, we did have a discussion...
Was it random, or was it pretty intensive on the activity funds?
We typically, we visit one elementary, one middle school, and one high school every year, Dr. Rivera. This year, we did, and you know, we were very satisfied with two of the schools. One of the schools, we did find some concerns, we shared it with the staff, and as a matter of fact, the staff had already identified it and had already taken steps to correct it and remediate, because we are talking a year, information a year ago. They've already taken steps to remedy it, so we didn't feel it was necessary to put it in here, because they've already taken steps to correct it and make adjustments to keep it, to keep moving forward.
But with 20 schools, is three enough in a year?
We typically, you know, it gives us a pretty good representation of the, since we do it every year, and you do have your internal, we do place reliance on your compliance auditor who does also do the visits. We do get from them copies of all the reports that they've issued, items that they've identified, corrective actions that they've taken. So, when we look at the combination of the two, we do feel satisfied with the coverage. It's an ongoing process, it never ends, especially when you have staff turnover retirements, and that you never can ease up on the training. And that's one thing that I know that the business office is trying to do.
Well, I see a very good job that you all did. I move to approve the recommendation to...
I'll second.
To approve the annual financial compliance audit report for 2017. Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Oscar to approve the annual financial and compliance audit report for the fiscal year ended August 31st, 2017. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Garza.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, sir.
Good job.
Thank you so much.
I guess what we get out of this, Doc, is insurance, we need to budget it correctly in moving forward. I know we've made some changes, and hopefully, that'll work out in the best interest for the district. Item C, discussion and possible action for the board to approve procurement method of construction for the improvements of the girls' athletic facilities and boys' athletic facilities at Wesco High School and Wesco East High School project. Item one, board determination of a procurement method of construction that will provide the best value to the district for the project. Item two, board determination to retain the authority to rank the proposals to be received for this project, or board delegation of their authority to the administration to rank the proposals to be received. And number three, approval of criteria and points to be used for the ranking of the proposals. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, it's our recommendation that you approve the competitive seal proposals method of construction, that you determine whether you want to retain your authority to rank the proposals for the project, or delegate that authority to administration, and that you approve the criteria, there are eight items on the criteria, and points, the points range from five to 35 for the items to be used for ranking the proposals.
What is the budget on this project, Andres?
4.6 million?
That was the original budget, 4.6?
We had 4.6 million.
And the actual is, what, 4.662?
Yes, and this is the recommendation the architect made, with almost 7.6 million. We did not include all the recommendations they had. We left some improvements pending to get more funding, but what we, the facilities committee agreed on after we discussed it, and then we shared with the board, we agreed on renovating both field houses at high school and Wesco East High School.
Coach, are you okay with the project? You're okay? I'll make the motion then, to go ahead and go with the competitive sealed proposals for the staff to rank them with the criteria presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Sidorov to go with the competitive sealed bids for the staff to rank those bids, and then approval and to approve the criteria as presented. Is there any further?
It's competitive sealed proposals.
Competitive?
Seal proposals.
Okay. I want to add the word competitive sealed, okay, I'm going to start again, we're going to go with the sealed bids.
Competitive.
Competitive sealed proposals.
Proposals?
Yeah, it's a specific construction procurement.
It's a term of art that's used for procurement.
We're going to go competitive sealed proposals with the staff to rank, correct? And then, we're going to go approve their criteria as presented. Is there any further discussion?
It's my motion.
End point.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion carries. Item D, discussion and possible action for the board to approve the procurement method of construction for Wesco East High School Band Hall Edition project. Dr. Canales.
So, Board of Trustees, we're recommending the procurement method of construction, the competitive sealed proposals method of construction, that you determine whether you want to retain your authority to rank the proposals for the project, or delegate that authority to administration, and that you approve the criteria, there's eight again, and the points to be used for ranking the proposals. On May 30th, 2017, the board approved ERO Architects from McAllen, Texas to design the specifications for the construction of the Wesco East High School Band Hall Edition project. Staff from ERO has met with me, the superintendent, Dr. Cantu, the principal, the band director, our fine arts coordinator, Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Garcia, Mr. Martinez, Baldemar Garcia, our purchasing director, our medical, and several others to discuss space needs, the space layout, to maximize the building use and efficiency, and approve the layout for the new band hall. The total cost for this project, we're estimating at 5.5 million, 342,000? Is that correct?
The construction plus 324 architect fees.
And what was the, what did we budget for that?
That one, only 5 million.
How much?
5 million.
And the fees for them is what percent?
6%.
Out of the 5 million, correct?
Out of the 5 million, 342, or whatever the actual cost of the construction.
Correct.
We're hoping that it's less, because Mr. Ochoa said that they were inflating their costs a little bit in their projection, but they were trying to get, see they could be lower. Hopefully, it's not a, but a worse, higher than what we thought. Because we're giving us high numbers to make sure we got...
So, the original budget with 5 million and the actual cost is going to be what?
The latest estimate is 5,342 for the construction.
Okay.
5,662 for construction and architect fees.
Where did you add the additional 300,000?
Hi?
From where?
Oh, from the fund balance, sign for facilities, we have some money still there that we can use. I had discussed with the board at the prior meeting, what we had discussed...
How is the one from east compared to the one from Wesco High School as far as square feet? Is that about the same?
It's a little bit smaller, not much. We're going to use the existing band hall.
Right.
So, it will be a little bit more altogether, yes. It'll be a little bit more than the other one at high school, because we're going to use the existing one.
I'll make the motion again, to go ahead and go with competitive sealed proposals, staff to rank them with a criteria presented. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Sidorov on the Wesco East High School Band Hall Edition project to go with competitive sealed proposals and allow the staff to rank them and approve their criteria as presented. Is there any further discussion?
We will see that final draft before it comes to us, right? Before we take action.
We'll do the design development later on, so we'll begin.
Mr. Ochoa, when is the completion date? The completion date?
We have it listed and here.
Nobody's here.
Thought he was here in the back.
November 26.
ERO?
Yeah.
Nobody's here.
November what?
November 26, 2018.
Of 18?
It's in the second page.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion carries. Item E, discussion and possible action for the board to approve, to modify the contract with Reich Ogden Figueroa and Alex Architects to add the design of the chemical storage building for the Aquatics Center. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, on September 25th, you approved the contract with Reich Ogden Figueroa and Alex Architects of McAllen, Texas to design the plans and specs for the improvements of two projects needed for the CTE early college high school courses, that's the Advanced Manufacturing Technology Shop and the Joel Cabio Cake Complex, and the Welding Woodworking Shop at the Pita Frigo Egg Farm. We're now requesting that you add the design of the chemical storage building for the Aquatics Center to the existing contract, except for an agenda item will be presented for your consideration and approval of the schematic design and design development for this project. The preliminary cost range estimate for the project is 100,000, plus approximately 7% in construction costs, or the architect fees are 12,750, and that includes engineering consulting. Funding for this project will be obtained from the local maintenance funds, fund balance assigned for facilities or other needs, and this is to make sure that we have the safe environment, free of any toxins in the context of the Aquatics Center.
Okay. Coach Fier, do you have any pictures of the current facility?
That's the next, is that the next item?
Is that the next item?
For the store...
On the next agenda, we have...
Okay.
Am I on the wrong, associated Rafa Architects will present during the board meeting? Or am I at the wrong one here?
This one's to modify the contract, and then the next item will have the, am I correct, the presentation of the schematic design and design development.
I clicked one too many.
Okay.
We're in E right now.
In E.
Yes.
So, the action on this, or this agenda item is simply to add this...
This project.
Project to the current work that Reich Ogden is already doing with the school district, so it just simplifies having all projects in one agreement.
I move to approve.
We have a motion by Dr. Rodriguez and a second by Andrew Gonzalez to approve the addition of the chemical storage building for the Aquatics Center to the contract, existing contract, with Reich Ogden Figueroa and Alex Architects. Is there any discussion? I have one question. Who's Alex?
Alex is our partner.
Because I remember Rafa from a long time ago.
Yes, sir. Yeah, he's been with us for a long time.
Okay.
It's been several years since he came, you know, his name came off.
Okay.
His name came off, and now he's part of the group.
But, I just didn't know him, and I know I've been in the construction industry, and I just, I thought I'd ask that question, it was, who's Alex? And I know you're a good friend of mine too, so, good to see you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion carries. Item F, discussion and possible action for the board to approve schematic design phase and the design development phase of the chemical storage building for the Aquatics Center. Dr. Canales.
This is the item where we will have the presentation by Rafa Architects to, for you to consider the approval of the schematic design phase and the design development plans for the chemical storage building for the Aquatics Center.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for letting me be here tonight. And so, we met with staff twice already, and they gave us an idea pretty much of what they were looking at. We did meet with a coach and the athletic director to get some ideas of what they wanted, and basically, it's to store the muratic acid and the chlorine. So, this is the first time, we presented this already to staff and to Coach, and they seemed to be okay with the area. So, basically, it's a very utilitarian building. We are considering using the same materials that they have there, block inside and brick on the exterior. We're going to match what you have there currently. If you notice, we're creating a lot of natural ventilation, so approximately from four feet and up, you're going to have brick screen, so it's going to be a good job for a mason contractor to do a good job in doing the screen wall. We gave them basically two options right now, but the best option that we have is on the north side of the parking lot, as indicated where my little hand is, right there. This is, we already started working with our engineer, and so, they've already looked at the, you know, the plan, what we're going to do with, in regards to, you know, electrical and plumbing and all these things. We're trying to minimize the amount of metals, because there's a lot of corrosion going on, so we're going to be real careful as to what we put on the building in regards to, you know, metals and that kind of thing. So, I mean, we're pretty much already there. Our engineers are currently working on that, and that's pretty much it. It's a pretty small building. So, if you all have any questions or comments?
You said you were going to go with a lot of airflow, or some air ventilation.
Correct.
You said four foot and above, you're going to do what?
Four feet, at four feet, it's just going to be your regular brick and block, and then above that, we're going to have a screen wall out of brick, so that there's natural ventilation going through.
Okay, will that allow driven rain to...
It won't. That's one of the challenges that we're looking at, Mr. President. I don't think there's going to be too much problems with that at this point. But we certainly want to look at that. We kind of look at some of the other schools that have that, and they really don't have a plan for that. Some other school districts, they just have them out on the open. I mean, and water hits it. They maybe just have a little metal panels and all that, so we looked at that, and I don't think it's going to be a problem, but we can certainly look at that issue.
The only reason I ask is because I know that I've bought pool chemicals before, probably not in the same quantities as are needed for this size of pool.
Yes, sir.
But some of it comes in paper bags.
Correct, yes.
And that's the only reason I ask you. And that's the only reason I ask you, that, that we won't lose any, any of those chemicals, because once they get wet, they'll.
They'll deteriorate.
Well, deteriorate, and it creates a reaction.
Yes.
And that's when the rust starts on the buildings. So, no, so look at that, make sure that we have no wind-driven rain being forced into the building or into the, into the area.
There's another option that I just looked at this afternoon. There's some fiberglass panels that are like lubers type, but they're fiberglass. So I thought about doing that and bringing it in, but it was kind of late for me to bring it in, but I'm glad that you asked the question because that is a challenging item at this point.
The other thing is, I mean, and I'm looking at your blueprints here, but I really can't look at the details very carefully.
I'm sorry.
But the doors are really important. Would you be going with fiberglass?
Yes, the doors will be fiberglass, and the frames will be fiberglass, and then the hardware will be stainless steel.
Stainless steel, perfect. Other than that, the only thing I would say, what kind of roof is it?
We are proposing to use a concrete slab on top, poured in place, and we're going to use columns at the corners and drop those in there and drop in the concrete reinforcing steel and have a real gentle slope so that everything flows out to the exterior. We created a little overhang around the perimeter so that water can shed out.
Now, can you tell me on, on your concrete, or you, I know you're, you're going to go with rebar, and I don't think you're going to go with epoxy coated rebar because of the cost.
I'm going to talk to our structural engineer and see what he suggests for that.
Okay. If not, I would like to see some fiber mesh.
Fiber mesh? Okay, that's a good option.
Yeah, the fiberglass reinforced?
Yes.
That way, I don't, I know it's not that much of an added cost, but at the same time, it, it'll increase the life of that building.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, well, obviously, we can't see, but Coach, Americo, is it going to go near the fence line of where, where we have all those air, old air conditioning units, all of that stuff?
Yeah, so there's some, there's some equipment right now on the north side where we're proposing to use it, but I believe that we've talked about maybe relocating those. You have a chain link fence right up against the parking lot, so what we're going to do is fix it so we can go around the building, come back and provide even some gates in there so we can keep people and pedestrians away from that area.
Yeah, it's, it's going to end up being in the property of energy management. So, yeah, all that salvage metals that we have, their equipment that we can just remove. Then the other reason being is that we work with many partners bases.
So you're okay with it, with the design? Put the stamp on it? All of you are okay with it? Then I'll make the motion then.
Second.
So go ahead.
Thank you.
With the schematic design.
Thank you.
Motion by Dr. Rivera, a second by Andrew to approve the schematic design phase and the design development phase of the chemical storage building for the Aquatics Center. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item G, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval to modify the contract with ERO Architects of McAllen, Texas, for the design of roofing improvements district-wide to only the following four campuses: Airport Elementary, Dr. Armando Cuellar Middle School, Schools Band Hall and Gymnasium, Big Arza Middle Schools Band Hall and Gymnasium, and Westlaco High School's Old Band Hall. Dr. Canales.
Porta Christies, we are recommending that you consider approval to modify the contract with ERO Architects of McAllen for the roofing improvements district-wide to only the four campuses mentioned, and we have Mr. Sanchez here with, for more details.
Mr. Lopez, Dr. Canales, members of the board, on this project, the roofing project, when we started back in February, we were looking at all. From all the roofs that we had, it was about five point six million that we thought it was going to cost us. We separated between Group One and Group Two. Group One was what we thought would be needed within a year or two. The other ones would be four to five years, so we left them for later. When we did, we were trying to do the bonding lecture, we had them all together, but that didn't happen. We wanted the most needed first. So we thought it would be about one, one million eight, including architect fees and any testing that was needed, and it was fifteen locations that we had. When the architects were hired, and we asked them, we hired them to do a separate independent evaluation of the actual roofs, because they said you're asking to just do some touch-ups on some of these roofs, but you actually, the roofs that need a lot more work. So they did a report. When they came back with those fifteen locations, the estimate came up to thirteen million. So we said, well, we don't have all that money either, so we concentrated on the most urgent ones, and those are the campuses that we mentioned. And the estimate for those are two point two million, and we do have the two point two million, almost two point three set aside for, out of the loan that we had, seventeen million that we received for the roofing projects. So we wanted to do that. Now, the agenda items, the contract we had was for all the roofs and all the locations, the fifteen, we wanted to narrow down to only those four campuses, six roofs that we have listed here.
Four or six? I think there's six.
It's four campuses, six roofs.
Six or eight.
Cuellar and Big Arza have a band hall and gym. So campuses, four, roofs, six.
And the other campuses?
Big Arza.
And the other ones that are not on this?
Oh.
The ones you took out? Are these the high, go ahead.
We had some work done, needed at Memorial, Norbridge, Rico, Kleckler, Silva, Silva Gonzales, those were minor items needed.
So these are the high priority roofs that we definitely need?
Yes.
Yes, what we're trying to do here is trying to avoid going back to sort of what we've been doing, just patching roofs.
Right.
So if we incorporate or include sixteen schools, then we essentially are just going to be patching up areas of the campuses. So we're trying to just replace entire roofs. Now, for the campuses, as you're requesting, Dr. Rivera, for the campuses that didn't make it onto the list, they were trying to find an expensive solution to buy us some time until we are able to accommodate the entire roof.
So this year, we could do these six, and maybe next year, include some of the other ones that are, will be hyper priority?
And implement an inexpensive solution of sealing the roof to where it'll buy us, you know, anywhere from three to hopefully five years while we get to more monies and do the entire roof properly.
Okay. The, the other thing for consideration on the, on this contract is it's, it's a narrowing of the scope, and so the question is, as far as the, the board's concerned, is do you want to have a provision in the agreement that indicates that this, the same architect will be utilized for the next phases of the project, whenever that may be? Or is it just simply the two million dollars worth of work that needs to be done, and then you all as a board decide when you do move forward with the other projects, you'll, you'll determine the architect at that time? So we needed to get some, some direction from the board so that we know how to modify the agreement with ERO.
Is there a possibility, and then, you know, now that we're doing this construction, I guess we hadn't done any construction in a very long time, that the schematics and the design be done, being that it takes such a long time to get, get it through approval and through design and all that, to get, since we already approved this, to get the drawings done and get the design done, and then bid it out as the money comes, becomes available, without us having to fire up the architects again. If our drawings are done, we're, we're ready to go once we find some money. And if you, if we do this and stop the design, then once we crank it up again, it's going to take another two years or another year and a half to get drawings, design, and put it off for bids again, in, instead of being ready to put it off for bids and ready to go.
Yes, what on, Mr. Lopez, this project, the estimate they came back with was thirteen million. We're taking two point two out, so that leaves almost eleven million left. Of that, the six percent fee for the architect will be almost seven hundred thousand dollars.
I know, but you have.
Which we don't have.
The five point six million is, is what?
Okay, the seven hundred thousand dollars of the fee, everything before construction would be seventy-five percent of the fee. And we have to pay about half a million dollars on architect fees.
But the five, when you started, you said there was a five, five point six million dollars, and I didn't catch what that was for. Was that what you originally thought it would cost?
Well, we thought it was in five point six million, yes. The one we thought.
So do you have that money?
Do you have?
No, no, we don't have it.
You don't, all you have is a one point eight?
Right, yes. When, when we had the bonding lecture, we had all the, the roofs included. Their numbers were wrong, obviously. We thought it was going to be enough, five and a half million. But what we thought was going to be one point eight million ended up being thirteen million, so the other ones probably going to be higher, too. So for the thirty million, if we just have the architect now, like you said, and have the plans drawn and everything, we're going to have to pay seventy percent of the architect fee already, because the last amount is twenty percent, twenty-five percent for construction, and five percent for bidding, add to the design is seventy percent.
What is the plan, or what is your plan to get the rest of the money to fix those roofs?
We're hoping at the end of the year, this coming August, that we might have a million dollars at least that we can do at least one school, if it's the entire school that needs to be done, or in two years or four years, if there's IFA money, we can do all of their roofs. That's what we're talking about, doing some work, patching work, Americo said.
What percentage are the, are the architects charging?
Six percent.
Six percent?
Are they construction code, yes. And seventy percent of the architect fee is for having the drawings ready to go out to bid. So we had to pay about three quarters of the architect fee, even if we don't build it. So it's a big amount, and we don't have the extra money.
Yeah. Well, to me, this is a priority, all the roofs, all the ones you mentioned. We gotta, we can't have the kids out there at risk if they're leaking and mold and everything else.
Yes, sir.
So don't you have a million dollars from the tax increase?
Yes, well, we wanted to use.
The following year?
For the pre-K full-day program, the two cents amount on the INS fund, by transferring less money to the INS to pay bonds, so we'll keep a million dollars in local funds that we can use for the pre-K full day. Let, let me finish working on the report that I'm doing on the fund balance, sign for facilities, throughout the needs, because some of the money that I had set aside there for construction, we were able to put it on the loan, so I'll give you a better picture of what we have to make a better decision on that. We don't have money for all the roofs, definitely.
You know, you gotta, you gotta put down what's priority, and the roofs, to me, are more priority than fences, than pavilions, things of that nature. I mean, this is big leak stuff.
Yeah. Ken, you know, I'd like to revisit this item.
Yes.
Because I think we need to come up with a better plan instead of just saying only one point eight million. If we need to go out and, and I don't know what our, our ability to borrow some money or, or develop some different plan or some different options, but to, to say that we need thirteen million dollars and we're only going to do two million dollars worth of repairs is, is difficult to swallow, very difficult. You know, so I'd like to revisit this and maybe give our superintendent some time to, to look at this a little bit harder and, and then bring it back.
Well, and the other thing we had asked from ERO was for them to identify and kind of code the projects. This is what we need for the ideal, but chunk it. These are red, absolutely need to replace all of them, you know, the tire roof. These are yellow, you can do some patchwork, and here's how you do it, and here's how much it will cost, and get another three years on, you know, these couple of roofs. And then this one, or these are green, you can probably wait five to six years if you patch a little bit before you have to replace them all.
Is that what happened here?
Because we definitely do not want, you know, it raining on our teachers and our students and our staff.
We pretty much need all of the roofs soon.
Need all the roofs.
That's what we said we needed. When we started, we thought these are the ones for one or two years, because it's already a year from there, so.
Yeah, we're talking about roofs that are, that have a life of anywhere from between twenty, thirty years, and we're looking at Memorial Airport, North Bridge, those schools are from the early nineties, and so, yeah, we're, we're a bit behind.
You know, you know, and, and being that I am in the construction industry, you know, a twenty, thirty-year roof, they do call it a twenty, thirty-year roof, but that's in an, an environment not like we have here.
Perfect environment.
You know, that it's summer all year long. You know, so a thirty-year roof, and everybody owns a house down here knows that you buy thirty-year shingles, and in five years, you haven't, they look bad, and you have to replace. You know, ten years, you, you need a new roof. You know, so I, I'd like to, and I don't know what the rest of the board wants to do, table this item and look for, either look for some money, borrow some money, or find something to fix our roofs. Dr. Rivera, how do you feel?
Aye, I agree. My only concern is, you know, eventually, you know, these, these particular roofs need to be replaced, and if these were singled out as top priority, you know, it's still going to cost, I mean, we, we delay it, it's just going to delay the whole process again. Either way, these, these roofs need to get replaced.
The only thing, Doc, that I feel is that if, we've already got a contract for, I believe, for the, all the roofs?
Right, right now, it's all the roofs.
Right now, we have all the roofs. You know, all I'm saying is that all we're approving is one point eight million dollars. Maybe we can up that fine maybe five million dollars, or go to half of the, of the project. If it's thirteen million, maybe go to six million dollars worth of roofing. And, and instead of cutting everything out, add a few more schools.
But can we approve these to get it rolling and then come up with that, come, come up with those funds and add, you know, a few more roofs, maybe a little sooner or quicker?
Let me tag along with, with Jaime. I think we've seen the needs with the heavy rains that we got at some of these schools, and I hate to prolong it. I, I think we should approve here. Thirteen million dollars worries me a lot, especially, don't know where we're going to get it from, but I, I hate to stop this now, and, and let's get this going. And us as a board, visit, what can we do to, to get those other schools that maybe needed a, a next year or two years down the road? But along with what Dr. Rivera says, our roofing, it should be a priority, but just to hold off and prolong it even more, that, that's worrisome. And so.
I agree.
If it's okay with the rest of y'all, I'd like to take action as far as approving these so we can get this going, but knowing that whether we have to have a special board meeting, Dr. Canales, Andres Americo, whatever we got to do to see what we can do about those other schools.
But you already designated those particular ones as high priority already.
Yes.
Right?
Is anybody here from ERO? Okay. You want, you want to come up?
Also, just for your information, the, the architect did propose a modification of the agreement that would make the, the projects that you see in front of you Phase One, and then he would continue, he's proposing that he continue to serve as architect for Phase Two, and so on and so forth as needed. So, you know, in, in terms of whether or not you, you continue or separate or get another, I mean, it, it's really up to the board, however you want to proceed, but they're not proposing to just cease being contractually obligated to, to the rest of the project.
Right.
Okay. That, that's what I didn't want to, because I know that if, if you're looking at a thirteen million dollar project that gets cut down to one point eight million, it, it sort of kind of loses the flavor, and that's what I'm afraid of, you know? But if we can keep the contract as the whole, and to proceed with these four or five roofs that, that are being presented, and then add as, as, as much funds become available, then that's, that's quite okay. I'm, I'm, I agree with that.
The figure is two point two million.
Yeah.
One point eight is what we thought, thought it was in February.
Okay, so it's two point two million dollars?
For these six roofs.
And, and find some more money, Andres? Okay? I don't know. But these roofs do need to get fixed. Thank you, and, and that's, that was my question to ERO, whether they would agree to, I mean, just continue going forward. Thank you, Evan. Thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Dr. Rodriguez and a second by Andrew to approve the, ERO Architects of McAllen, Texas, for the design of roofing improvements district-wide to begin only with the following four campuses: Airport Elementary Drive, Armando Cuellar Elementary Middle Schools Band Hall and Gymnasium, and Gymnasium, Big Arza Middle Schools Band Hall and Gymnasium, and the Westlaco High School Old Band Hall. Is there any further discussion?
And, Mr. President, it's to modify the contract to reflect the, the projects you just mentioned.
Okay, the motion is to modify the contracts to begin with these projects as I just listed. Is there any further discussion?
So Airport is the only school, Andres, that we're doing, the whole school? The other ones, you just have band halls and gyms and?
Yes, and Band Hall, High School.
So Airport is the, the whole school?
The one is the worst of all the elementarys.
Okay.
Now Airport was built at the same time as?
Memorial and North Bridge.
Memorial and North Bridge, and those are not as bad?
They're bad, but this one was more. So we need to find money for those two, plus the other ones as well.
Just got one question real quick.
Yes, sir.
I, I'm trying to remember, we did, we did send out for bids on this, right?
For qualifications, for the architects?
Or, or I guess, I guess whoever's gonna do the, the work?
It's just for a drawing?
For the architects, yeah. We, we received ten responses and the board selected five.
Okay, I'm trying to remember here, it's been a while, I guess.
This was the project that was assigned to ERO?
To ERO, beside the Band Hall.
All right.
And we assigned it, it was at what, two million, whatever you had budgeted?
We thought it was about 1.8.
Okay.
That's what we thought it was for all the fifteen.
And, and then one more question. The money that you said is gonna cost us to do this project, because I know the auditor said that, one of the little red flags that he said, our working capital, we're supposed to be, you know, in a safe two to three months, and we're like at a month and?
No, the fund balance and assign.
Yes, but this, this money was in the construction.
Assigned for facilities.
Okay, it was, it was already there, right?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, no, no problem.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item H, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of a procurement method for the construction of the Roofing Improvement Project at the following four campuses: Airport Elementary, Dr. Armando Cuellar, Middle Schools Band Hall and Gymnasium, Biggarza Middle Schools Band Hall and Gymnasium, and Wesco High School Old Band Hall.
Since it's approved, I'll make the motion to go ahead and go with competitive seal proposals that staff rank them and with the points, the points present, the criteria presented.
I'll second.
A motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Oscar to go with competitive sealed proposals for the board to rank the proposals and to, and approve the criteria as presented. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm just, just for clarification, for the board to, to rank?
No, staff.
Staff to rank. Staff to rank with the, the criteria presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item I, discussion and possible action for the board to approve the schematic design phase and design development phase for the roofing improvement projects at the following four campuses: Airport Elementary Drive, Armando Cuellar, Middle Schools Band Hall and Gymnasium, Biggarza Middle School Band Hall and Gymnasium, and Wesco High School Old Band Hall. I don't remember doing this like this, it's like?
We're doing, yes.
Well, we have three processes.
To move, to move it along.
Yeah.
Yes, right.
It's like?
Yes.
So we do have representatives from ERO here to present the schematic design.
Anyway, good afternoon, Mr. President, uh, and, and trustees. I'm Jerry Garcia with ERO. With me is Jose Rios.
Adjust the mic just so that everybody else can hear you, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You want me to repeat, sir?
Yes, Doc. Yes? Go ahead, repeat.
Yes. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mr. President, Superintendent and Trustees. I'm Jerry Garcia with ERO Architects, and with me tonight is Jose Rios as well. Tonight, we're presenting the Cuellar Middle School Re-roof Project. As we move over, how do you? Uh, yeah, okay. Okay, that is, the, the views you're looking at is one is the actual gymnasium and the other one is the actual Band Hall that is going to be re-roofed. One is consistently with the tekton panel, the other one's a, is a F-type deck?
It's a metal deck.
Metal deck system. The, that's mock bid, yeah. The objective is to remove the tekton all the way down, I mean, not the tekton, but the roof all the way down to the tekton system, and start from scratch with rosin paper, hardboard, polyiso, and then come back and cover it up with the systems, the multi ply. Also, we're integrating the gutter system that they're looking to have as well. And of course, we're gonna add an access ladder from the existing roof down below to the higher roof on that section as well, on that area, on the gym. On the Band Hall, we're gonna be removing, of course, all the way to the deck, coming back to bring it up to code. One other thing that we're gonna do, we're gonna remove the existing dead man ladder that they have on the east side of that building and provide them with a roof access hatch inside the mezzanine area up to the roof area to make it more safe oriented for accessibility purposes. And of course, that's a multi ply system with roof drains associated to that, so we can get that also as well on the, on that installation. Right now, they're, they're continuing working on the structural. I think the structure's still pending on a little bit of the items, just to button up the uplift.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and just on the effluent section, and of course, he's working on, Mr. Rios is working on getting all the other defined items taken care of as the details, articulating that on all the roof system. As you can see, some of those details shown there, and continuing on from there. And pretty much very close to finishing up the documents. The specifications on this is also about fifty percent done. So we're needing, as I talked to Mr. Sanchez here, we need some of your information as well so we can impose it into the specifications and get that taken care of as well on the legalities of it. So we'll move on to the, oh, I got a pit, how do you get? Yeah, maybe you need to. Which is the next one, Beatriz? There you go. There, you got it. It's okay like that. Okay. Beatriz Garza, the engagement on that one was to modify the existing metal roof system on the existing gymnasium and Band Hall. In this area, of course, you've got single slope type architectural panels with gutter systems, and you have also areas there with sidewall R-panel type systems. So our objective there is to provide a complete overlay on that system with, it's multi ply from the middle?
Yes, sir.
Multi ply with the ISOs, everything accordingly to code. One of the articulated items that we're still working, almost buttoned up, is the structural attachments to that as well, to make sure we all meet uplift wind loads. And we're also providing one, two, three accessible ladders for that area. And talking to staff, and all this is oriented to meetings with your staff. There's an access ladder that they have in there that's pretty much weathered and a secondary that's very weathered. So we're proposing the actual ladders that need to be up there, the aluminum type ladders, for one access to the, to the lower area of the gymnasium, then to the higher area of the gymnasium, and then back down into the Band Hall, because there's no other access other than the one that's behind the cafeteria. So we're, we're getting them engaged in all that and providing them the necessary accessibility areas as well. As you can see, we've started on the modifications, the detailing as well to complete that. I don't believe he's got much left on that, other than buttoning it up with the structural. So. And the next one is going to be Westlock, oh, no, Westlock High, here we go. Westlock High consists of the old Band Hall. The old Band Hall system that they had previously installed there is pretty much weathered, of course. But our objective is to tear out all the way down to the deck and come back with a new system of multi ply with all the necessary code compliant installations and whatnot. That area also has three RTU units that were, not too long ago, were installed with curb adapters. One of the items, what, these are, this is one of the items that we're looking very closely at. One of the things that needs to be done existently right now is to lift those units up again to re, reseal everything and then set them down. But one of the discussions I had with your staff was maybe we should venture into putting the correct curb in there and make it look like it should really be there. And they were in agreement with that, but we're gonna provide you that in an alternate format to see if it really is justifiable to do that or leave it the way it is for the time till later on so you don't incur any additional cost that you don't really, because right now, it's functioning. There's nothing wrong with it, but just to see if we can make it happen down the road. As you can see, he's also defined all the elements that are necessary in there as well. He's got details associated to that, and that also is the engineers. He's just about buttoned up on all the designs that he has to provide. But he will visit the site tomorrow to finalize the details for the possible alternate on the retrofitting of the new curb for those RTUs that are existently put in there. The last one is Airport. Airport is one of the projects we've visited quite, quite often now lately because we're wanting to make sure we button up and we catch every little element that's on that roof. We're, we're, we're not too concerned with it, but we are in the sense that we wanna make sure that you get all the dry-in possibilities on that, especially where the RTU units are up on that crest there at the entrance area, well, not the entrance, but the cafeteria entrance on the south side. We're making those provisions structurally as well, and electrical as well, and mechanical as well. And we've talked to the staff as well on some of the items that they would like for us to impose into the documents and some of the items that they possibly might wanna take care of themselves. So we've, we provide, we're gonna provide all the language, and prior to putting it out on bid, we'll define those elements and make sure that we got them right to where, where their expectations are in the sense of their responsibilities or the contractor's responsibilities. So we'll make sure we button that up correctly. As we progress on this one, we've, this is also a multi ply system. We've factored in all the elements in sense of the structural details, uplift, and just about done. And again, like I mentioned before, specifications are about fifty percent done, which I'm working on myself. I just need some of the little elements in regards to the legal language so that we can put that in there. And that's what I need of the day, whether we're gonna bid all independently or all together. And so we've had discussions of how we were gonna prepare that, and wants to prepare everything together, but in an A, B, C format, so that way you can selectively choose the different numbers from different contractors, or maybe the contractor all buttons up in one good price, but whatever's favorable to you guys as well. Thank you. And I believe that's it, sir, ma'am, as well, I'm sorry.
I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Real quick, you refer to the, some of the roofs, I guess there's several types of roofs that you're gonna be using? Roofing systems?
One type is a multi ply system.
Okay, the multi ply, is that tar paper and?
That is the, the multi ply system is the, I believe, it's the, is it the eighty-seven?
Or is that a synthetic roof?
It's a, it's, it's what? Yeah, it's a sixty-seven and eighty-seven ply, right? It's the base sixty-seven and the final eighty-seven ply on top of the system to give it that longevity of the twenty, twenty-five years, twenty-five years, right?
But is, is that old school with the asphalt? Or is that the new, new system that is vinyl or the rubber? Is that what we're talking about? So we're gonna be getting that, now, what kind of warranty are those roofs?
Those twenty-five.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll make all the provisions, more so than anything on the walking tracks up above on the roof that usually are the reasons why sometimes these roofs get beat up. Because there's a lot of people up there walking, just walking up there, and what happens with this granules that you?
What is the warranty on these roofs? What is the warranty? The warranty?
The warranty on these roofs?
How many years?
Twenty-five years. Twenty-five years, sir.
A hundred percent?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we'll provide the information on the NDL, sir, on a no-dollar limit for twenty-five years, and request that from the contractor, or whoever the supplier is and the vendor, sir.
Staff, are you okay with the, with the design? American?
Yes, sir.
You recommend it?
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion then to approve the schematic design for these projects.
Second.
We have the two doctors, Dr. Rivera and Dr. Rodriguez, making a motion to approve the schematic design phase and design development phase for the roofing improvement project at the following four campuses: Airport Elementary, Dr. Armando Cuellar, Middle Schools Band Hall and Gymnasium, Biggarza Middle Schools Band Hall and Gymnasium, and the Wesco High School Old Band Hall. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion carries. Item J, discussion and possible action for the, for the board to approve the design development phase for the Advanced Manufacturing Technology Shop at the Joe Calviel Cape Complex and the Welding Woodwork, Woodworking Shop Improvements Project at the Pita Abrego Egg Farm Complex. Dr. Canales?
Director of Trustees, we have a presentation for this item as well. At the end, we will, we will be recommending that you approve the design development phase for the improvements of the two projects mentioned.
Good afternoon, or good evening. And I want to apologize because I didn't introduce myself the first time. My name's Humberto Rodriguez, and I am a architect with Roig Ogden Figueroa. So this last month, y'all approved the schematic design for those projects. So basically, what we've done since then, we met once more with the staff on every, on every particular department, and we actually talked about the equipment that's going in there. We have our engineering staff with us now, and he, he met with us, and we're getting all the electrical, plumbing, and HVAC requirements. So just to give you a real quick update, we are continuing with the work. As you can see, the floor plan here gets a little bit more complicated in that we've got building sections, details, door schedules, room finish schedules, as we discussed with staff. This, this is the before and after picture. As far as the, the veneers that we have there, we're basically matching what you have there already. So it's really like not, nothing out of the ordinary, we're just matching what you have. In this particular case, it's a split-faced CMU, and our idea is to match what you have there. There might be an opportunity to perhaps maybe accent those, those particular fill-ins with a different color, if you wish to do that, and we can always go that through a color, through a colored board. Nonetheless, that's, that's, we're already, the, the design development, our engineers are already looking at that. Like I've said, there are their drawings, so that's pretty much there. I don't know if there's anything else that you wanna talk about, AMT. The second one is the welding shop, woodworking shop, again, at, at the Pita Abrego Ag Complex. We met with their staff, and we've kind of already got the side plan pretty much already situated. As we explained last, last time, we're gonna do this, this prize as an alternate prize because the, the cost for this would be separate from the building cost. And there's some, some very, a little bit of flat work to be done there, sidewalks, and we're kind of fixing up your parking lot to make sure that it meets with the ADA, American Disabilities Act. We've already met with the city, and, you know, they asked us to provide, you know, you know, fire-rated walls, you know, and all this stuff, and all the requirements that they need, so we've done that already. We've got the plumbing count done for them also. This is just the existing plan, the way it is, demolition plan, and this is your proposed plan. Last time, we talked about the classroom, the woodworking area, the, the welding shop, and the outside storage. And, and everybody was pretty pleased with the location and, and the sizes that we provided. These are your existing elevations, proposed elevations, we talked about that also. We got, you know, a six-foot wall, CMU wall around the perimeter, and then we added some chain link fence right above that. These are your building sections already, we're already working on that. I mean, we're working as fast as we can to, to, to meet your schedules. And these are the engineering drawings, again, they're, 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 they're looking into that. They may be visiting your site to get a particular, you know, existing conditions of electrical, plumbing, and HVAC. And then there's your schedule. This is a schedule that was provided by the district, and we are adhering to that. And so at this point, we're, we're there. If you have any questions?
One, I, we can't, I can't see anything on this thing. Can you go back to your?
Yes, sir. The building sections?
Yeah.
Building section.
Right there, where we have the chain link fence?
Yes, sir.
And that's for ventilation, correct?
Correct.
So it's gonna be on the?
It's gonna be on the south side, so you have prevailing winds coming from the southeast, and then it's gonna start blowing. However, our engineers are still looking into providing additional exhaust. There are certain, some motion requirements that they're looking into that. So if that's required, we will provide that.
Okay. Well, my own concern was the ventilation.
Who was involved, as far as the district is concerned, with?
Their staff.
The needs and wants of?
The needs and wants of, of, of the buildings?
Mr. Canales? Mr. Canales, come up to the podium, sir.
Ms. Avila, will you come with the staff, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll beat Dr. Rivera to the punch. Are y'all happy with, with the design and what we're getting here? Is this what y'all want?
Yes, sir. We've met several times and we've made improvements every single time that we've met and I think we're at fine, but we're, we're happy.
What equipment we're going to have in there? What equipment?
It's going to be the welding?
All the welding stuff?
For the CTE at College High School.
Quick question for you.
Yes.
And going back to one of Mo's on one of the other presentations.
Yes, sir.
Wind-driven ring.
I'm sorry?
Wind-driven ring. We're going to have?
It, it, it's open, sir. I mean, I, I'm not sure how, how else we could, you know, unless you enclose the, the entire building. We've seen, we've done one for PSJA, the CCTA building, and it's exactly like this. Not exactly, but they have an open structure.
Is the chain link, though, on the south side?
It's actually on the west side and partially north. It's like the northwest and south side, south areas that's open. They haven't complained.
No, just worried about the rank because majority of that comes this way.
Right.
Is there any possibility of, of an addendum with, with some canopies that'll, that'll cover, add additional cover? I mean, an addendum?
It, it is possible. I mean, we would have to kind of look at, see what we can do there. It would have to be probably as an alternate, you know, to see the cost. But being that the, the building's approximately like eighteen feet up in the air, I mean, it's way up there, anything you put is going to have to extend a lot to be able to stop the...
Provide any kind of cover?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, I see your concern.
Yeah.
I see your concern and, I mean, it could be fixed. I mean, we could extend the walls all the way to the top and enclose it. But, you know, then we have to really start working with, with ventilation, you know, and provide additional mechanical units to provide the actual ventilation.
I like at least Plan B, you know, whether it's put in an angle at our existing roof, you know, we got to go six feet down from the outside because I'm there every day, so I know exactly what you're talking about. You know, where it would deter some of the rain? I don't know if that's what y'all do, but.
Right.
And maybe the possibility of seeing what it does with, with the ventilation so that these kids aren't, aren't harmed.
Right. Yeah, we can certainly look at that.
Thank you.
Okay.
We did speak with STC instructor also and it's comparable to their, their facility over there and he also suggested to leave it open to also have some ventilation.
And he was the department chair from STC and he did say that we did not need the exhaust, but.
Yeah, but there's still review of that.
Right. I mean, I'll go with what they say.
Well, I just, again, I'm not a welder, but I've seen it and, you know, there's stuff going all over the place.
It's close to what they have at STC. It's actually better than what they have now.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Andrew and a second by Oscar to approve the design development phase for the Advanced Manufacturing Technology Shop at the Joe Calviel Kate Complex and the Welding Woodworking Shop Improvements Project at the Pita Brigo Ag Farm Complex. Is there any further discussion?
This project is about a million dollars, Andres. About a million dollars?
Eight hundred and forty thousand. Architect piece, construction, and testing.
You know, I think in the future, we need a workshop where we list all the facilities and then we rank them as to what is more important. Is this more important than the roofs? I don't know. I, I think we need, we need a workshop. It's too late now. We can't, we can't stop. We can't stop this project. Maybe you already had the workshop, maybe I didn't attend, but I think, again, we have so much money and we have to rank the project, which is more important. The roofs, the fences, this project, the pavilion, and then, and then have the board rank.
Well, I, I think, Doc, Ms. Avila, if I'm not mistaken, our kids need this to, to qualify or to get. And I believe that's why it's ranked up there towards the top.
If I may, our cohort, we're on our fourth cohort in CT or the college with welding and the AMT. So as we grow, we need the shop space. Right now, we do send welders over to the McAllen Technology Center and with the creation of this, we're going to be working with CT where we'll have the, the shops in the afternoons and that's going to alleviate the, the class sizes, so there's more.
No, I understand you need them, I understand that, but the board here needs to decide what is more important. Is this more important or fixing the roofs?
Dr. Rivera, I will, I will bring you up, inform you that there is a Facilities Committee meetings, once a month, Doc? Is it twice a month?
Twice a month and we're aiming for twice a month.
And, and it's been discussed. As far as, as soon, as early or just our last, last meeting that I attended, what you just said was discussed, and it had been discussed previously, as to creating a master, master list of everything, everything that the district needs and, and then bringing it for, for this board to, to approve or disapprove and, and also help in, in determining, determining some order and of our needs. I will tell you that the needs are much more than, than what we have financially available right now, so.
I understand, but I'm just saying we need to rank them because we've had other projects, not just this one. And we need this one, I, I mean, I support it. But again, what's more important?
Yep.
We spend how much money on fences?
Kind of, I agree with Dr. Rivera, maybe once every three months, maybe have a board workshop to where we can, you know, like, I'm not aware of what's going on either. That's why I was asking the questions about, you know, that other agenda item, but I mean, I'd like to know, you know, what's going on.
Mr. Lopez, Dr. Canales.
It's about four hundred and fifty thousand offenses.
Andres.
Four hundred and fifty thousand.
Andres, hold on.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lopez, Dr. Canales, you know how, because we're both on that committee, that sheet that has now, next couple of years and beyond, I think y'all need, we need to give that to the whole board.
That's in your plan.
That, that everybody is aware and then along with what Dr. Rivera says and, and Mr. Caballero, every three months or every two months, have the board workshop so we can see, or Mr. Lopez and I get to see on those sheets.
Wait, if I may say, when we did the, ranked the, the facilities and we run into the committee and then to the board eventually, we were not aware of the severity of the need on the roofs. That's why we thought we're going to address all the roofs with the amount we allocated. We ranked roofing at number one, but it did not, the money that we have was only for six projects, six roofs instead of fifteen. We thought it was going to cover everything, but it didn't.
I understand.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion carries. Item K, discussion and possible action for the board to approve the design development phase for the pavilions at Cuellar Middle School and Mary Hogue Middle School and a new canopy and restrooms for the Science Wing Buildings at Central Middle School Project. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, these items were also on the priority list for the Facilities Committee approved by the Board of Trustees. We do have representatives from Alvarado Architects who will be presenting the design development phase for the pavilions at Cuellar Middle School and Mary Hogue Middle School and the new canopy and restroom for the Science Wing Building at Central Middle School. The schematic designs were approved at the last board meeting for all three items.
Good evening, Board President Lopez, members of the board, and Dr. Canales. Ilal Alvarado, Vice President of Alvarado Architects and Associates, here to present to you the design development for the pavilions at the three middle schools. A quick summary of work, we are, we, we will be constructing new pavilions at Dr. Armando Cuellar Middle School, a new pavilion at Mary Hogue Middle School, and a restroom building at the Science Wing along with canopies leading to the main campus at Central Middle School. The budget, estimated budget for the project is 1.2 million. The first site is at Dr. Armando Cuellar Middle School. We have conducted the geotechnical testing at Dr. Armando Cuellar Middle School and Mary Hogue Middle School and the geotechnical testing for the Central Middle School was conducted last week, so we should be receiving that report next week as well so we can get started on, on those two. But we have started here on Dr. Armando Cuellar Middle School. It is located on the southeast corner of the project, away from the practice fields and closest to one of the existing pavilions that's out there with some chairs and tables out there. And this is the location that was agreed upon by administration. Mary Hogue Middle School, it's located in that small island in between the school and the tennis courts. And again, this was agreed upon by administration and the principals at each school. The pavilions will consist of one main court running north and south and it will also have two practice courts running east and west, so a total of three courts. The courts will also have lighting, it will have some speakers, and it will have some drinking fountains and some electrical connections out there for some portable speakers or, or PA system that you may need out there. We do have a sidewalk around the entire perimeter as well, so students can have access from there to back to the campus.
When you say around, are you talking about around the?
The whole entire, the whole entire pavilion, yes, sir.
Okay, now, the downspouts and the water, will it go under the sidewalk?
Under the sidewalk, we have a drain box and then to drain out to the, to the natural grate, yes, sir.
The size is the same as the other pavilions?
I believe, it's a, a little bit larger, but not by much. I think they were fifty by hundred or sixty by hundred, if I remember correctly, including the sidewalks.
I have one observation.
Yes, sir.
This building is running, I believe, north and south?
Yes, sir.
And I know the sun goes the other way. I don't know if there's a, if there's a way, and I'm not talking about the location, but about the orientation of the building because it, it would provide longer shade.
Sure.
If it was facing the other way. I don't know if you can talk to our administration?
We can, we can look at that as well, but we also have a siding that we have protruding down, which you can see here on this next slide. So we're coming down about three or four feet from the top to protect some of that shade also on that sun as well.
Okay. But go ahead and, and run that idea through, I mean, if that's the way they want it, that's the way they want it.
Sure, absolutely. We will get their input, yes, sir. These are just a couple of the wall sections which we have already begun designing. And the last location at Central Middle School, again, this is the restroom building located on the north side of the, of the Science Wing and with the canopy connecting to the main campus. This is just the floor plan. We do have both boys and girls restrooms. The middle area is a janitor area. One thing that they've asked recently is potentially a teacher's restroom at this location. This is a large janitor area, we can fit it in there. We're just trying to see if maybe we can add one male and one female for each teacher or possibly one unisex for both of the teachers. But we, at the minimum, we can add one in this location and this is also, we'll be having the mechanical unit for this small addition. And then finally, we're just going to be adding on to the north side. We're going to match the existing brick that's there. We're going to be matching the metal roof that you have on there as well. We're adding some lights along the, along the edge of the door to allow more natural light in there. And then on the west side, we've got some round windows to allow for natural light along in the hallway for, for more lighting in there as well. It's just a quick building section through there. And then our schedule, our construction schedule, we are going at the end of January for construction documents. We hope to bid the project in February, awarded in March, that way we can get started there toward the end of the school year, have most of the summer to complete the projects. I believe that the pavilions at Mary Hogue and at Dr. Armando Cuellar can be done fairly quickly. The one that's going to take us a little bit longer is obviously the restrooms with more of the plumbing and the utilities around there that we have to rework and that'll probably push us right into September, if not October, of this year. So we hope to complete most of it by the summer and the restroom buildings toward the beginning part of, of the October of 2018. And with that, I'll say thank you and open up to any questions that you may have.
The round windows, are they matching something on the existing school? Is it just something?
No, that's our architectural element that we decided to put in there, something different, but allow for more natural light to get into that hallway.
Okay, now, the, the only reason I, I bring that up is in replacing those windows, would they be more expensive than a, a regular square window? I'm sure that, or is it just tempered glass or is it insulated glass?
It's, it's tempered glass, but obviously it's round versus square, so a little bit more cost, but we don't anticipate hopefully breaking any glass.
Yeah.
And we looked at also putting some clear story up above, but we did present both options and this one was the one that was chosen.
The one that they liked?
Yes.
Okay, if they liked it, then I'm fine with it.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions or comments, guys?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. I have a motion by Andrew and a second by Oscar to approve the design development phase for the pavilions at Cuellar Middle School, Mary Hogue Middle School, and a new canopy and restroom for the Science Wings Buildings at Central Middle School Project. Is there any further discussion?
Well, again, same argument. It's very nice, it's needed, but then what's needed the most, this or roofs?
Yes, sir.
And again, this is where the board needs to meet and discuss these things.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
Me, no.
Okay. Item L, discussion and possible action to approve the contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield for third-party administrator service. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, staff and legal counsel have been working on the contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield for the third-party administrator services. We have Mike De La Rosa here and Mr. Ivan Betis, who've been helping with us. So at this time, Mr. De La Rosa or Mr. Betis?
Yeah, you should have received in your packets the red line contract that's been going back and forth with Blue Cross. I guess we started the process sometime in July. There are a couple of issues that I do want to visit with y'all behind closed doors about in terms of contract negotiation, but I did send out an email to the board about a month ago letting you know that we were still having our discussions. And so last week, just to bring you up in terms of a timeline, Mr. De La Rosa and myself got together, went through the latest round of changes that had been proposed by Blue Cross and responded accordingly. And so there's probably maybe three issues with respect to the contract that I do want to talk to y'all about and maybe get some, get some direction or at least give you my thoughts on before we, before the board approves anything as it pertains to the contract.
I just want to make sure we're able to audit them, that's all.
Okay.
I mean, is that the holdup?
That, that, they, they are allowing a form of an audit or an audit, but there's some issues with respect to what they're proposing.
Let me ask you, are they, are they willing to give an audit like Dr. Rivera wants is that we're going to follow through this audit that, that we voted for last month?
With, with some limitation, when they, when Blue Cross proposed, they did tell the board that we couldn't hire somebody to do an audit on a contingency, but they are, at this point, the hang-up is on the number of physical files that we can get with respect to the audit. And again, I can, I can visit with you in the closed session.
So are you suggesting that we move this into closed session or just discussion and then bring it back when we come back?
So we did include an item in the closed session for discussion on this, so I'd recommend just holding off on any action on this particular item and possibly revisiting after the executive session.
Okay. So we just move on to item twelve?
Yes, sir.
Okay, item number twelve, and we will come back, after we come back from closed session and finish up with item L. So moving on to item number twelve is closed meetings to discuss A, personal matters, Texas Government Code 551.074, number one, employment of personnel, number two, resignations, number three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Texas Government Code 551.074 and 551.071. B, consultation with attorney regarding A, pending contemplated litigation, B, a settlement offer, or C, a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the Wesco ISD under the Texas Disciplined Rules of the Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, Texas Government Code 551.071. Item number one, Rafael M. Caballero versus Wesco ISD, cause number CL. Item number one, Rafael M. Caballero versus Wesco ISD, cause number CL-16-1811-F, before county court at law number six of Hidalgo County, Texas. Item number two, discussion regarding contract negotiations with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Time now is 9:05 and this board is going into closed session. Time is 9:58 and this board is back from closed session. We're going to revisit item number L, item, letter L. We had put that on, to revisit due to the fact that we had some legal questions with, to discuss with our attorney, so we're going to bring it back. And the item reads, discussion and possible action to approve contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield for third-party administrator services.
Mr. President, we did have a discussion in the back regarding the contract negotiation. And so we're not asking for approval at this point of the contract, but we are asking for authority for the administration and, and our office to proceed as, as discussed with respect to the contract negotiation.
Some move.
Second.
Have a motion by Andrew and a second by Siloto to approve administration to proceed as discussed in closed session with, with our third-party administrator, Blue Cross Blue Shield, on contract negotiations. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let the record reflect that Dr. Richard Rivera left the meeting at 9:50. Okay, now we will visit items that we have in, that we discussed in closed session, which is item A, personnel matters, Texas Government Code 551.074. Item number one, employment of personnel. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, a move that you approve the employment of personnel as discussed in closed session?
Some move.
Second.
Have a motion by Andrew and a second by Dr. Rodriguez to approve the employment of personnel as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Motion carries. Item two is resignation and that is a non-action item? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, moving on to item number three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Texas Government Code 551.074 and 551.071. And that is a non-action also, Ivan?
That's correct.
Okay. Moving on to item B, consultation with attorney regarding pending a contemplated litigation, a settlement offer, a matter in which the duty of the attorney of the Wesco ISD under the Texas Government Code, discipline rules of professional conduct, State Bar of Texas, clearly conflicts with chapter 551 of Texas Government Code 551.071. Sub item one, Rafael M. Caballero versus Wesco ISD, cause number CL-16-1811-F, before county court at law number six of Hidalgo County, Texas. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, the recommendation is to authorize the superintendent and legal counsel to proceed as discussed in the closed session.
Some move.
Second.
So motion by Andrew and a second by Dr. Rodriguez to proceed for administration and legal, and legal counsel to proceed as discussed in closed session. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Motion carries. Item two, discussion regarding contract negotiations with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Dr. Canales?
That, that item's already been dealt with through the action you took in letter L when you just came, when you came out of the executive session.
So this will be a non-action item?
There, there's no action neither.
No action, okay. Then we shall move on to item number 14, which is adjournment. Some move. The time is 10:02 and this meeting is over.